Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. We have a nice audience here, a couple of presentations that we're going to kick off, but before we do that, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And could I have Kalen O'Meara please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Flag's over here, Kalen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Kalen. All right. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda minutes from April 9th, 2015, and oath to bills and payroll?
Take a motion, accept the consent agenda as read?
Second.
Motion is made in second and in discussion. Hearing none, I'll move to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, all right, thank you. All right, interested citizens, if there's anybody here who would like to speak on any topic, who would ask you to come to the podium? All right, seeing none, we'll jump right into our presentations.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure that I welcome grade four teacher, Mrs. McGregor, this evening. Mrs. McGregor has brought some of her students along with her to give us a presentation on Mystery Skype in the classroom, something we've talked about before. It's exciting to have some students here this evening, enlightening us with what they do with Mystery Skype, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. McGregor at this time. Welcome.
All right, thank you.
You being first?
No, that's you. That's the big female.
Okay.
All right. Hello, and I'm glad so many people are here tonight to watch us talk about this game that we've been playing in our classroom called Mystery Skype, and I brought four fourth graders along to tell you all about our game, and after they're finished talking about it, we have a short video, it's two minutes, a two-minute video, and then they are available for questions and comments at the end, if anyone has any. So I want to introduce to you Declan Reedy, Chloe Coro, Christian Perata, and Kalen O'Meara.
A mystery call is a game that classrooms all around the world can play. It can be played using Skype, Google Hangout, and we even used FaceTime once. Our teacher sets up each call with the other teacher, but she doesn't tell us the location of the other classroom. We alternate turns with the other class and ask each other yes or no questions related to geography to try to be the first to figure out the mystery location. Time zones can make it challenging to set up a game in real time, but we usually make it work. One thing I really like about mystery calls is choosing my own job instead of being assigned one.
Everyone in our class has a job during every call. Our first call was a class with Illinois back in September. Since that was our first call, we used a job list chart another teacher had shared with Mrs. McGregor. It was a good place to start, but we ended up changing it quite a bit. After the call, we talked about how it, and how it went, and changed some things so that it worked, so that it would work better for us. It probably took us seven or eight calls to get the job list that we have now. Our jobs, our jobs are speakers, question writers, decision makers, photograph, photographers/videographers, map team members, volume controls, and back channelers. Back channeling is our newest job that we have just found about from a sixth grade class in Nebraska. My two favorite jobs are being the speaker and the decision maker. I haven't been a back channeler yet, but that sounds interesting.
Since our learning objectives in social studies include North America, we have held all of our mystery calls within this continent. In the US, we have connected with classrooms in Illinois, Minnesota, Vermont, Indiana, Iowa, Florida, Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska, California, and Maine. We have also connected with two provinces in Canada, Manitoba and Ontario, and the state of Sonora in Mexico. This, the call with Ontario was really special because after the call, we found out that they were going to be our e-pals for the rest of the year. We were partnered up with this student from their class, and we send each other emails. We just started a new project with them. We are doing an art exchange poetry project. My e-pal's name is Gavin, and he and I are getting to know each other.
The other social studies teachers in fourth grade have tried this game too, and it is starting to spread to fifth grade. About a month ago, we did a practice call with Mrs. Stankowski's class because they wanted to try it out. The next week, they did a real call with a school in Maine and have shuttled another call as well. We also, we also played a version of the game called Mystery Number with Mrs. Maurice's first grade class at Shakerling. I think it makes it more fun knowing that the other people are trying it out too. Now we have a video to share with you. It gives you an idea about why we do mystery calls and how they work in our classroom.
So, could you start the?
Yeah, you ready?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Melissa. And I'm Declan. Um, would you like to go first?
Are you, need to steal? (Inaudible)
Do you, do you?
Could you please repeat the questions?
Are you on the?
Could you please repeat the questions?
Are you on the?
All right, so if anyone has any questions or comments for our student speakers, they are available.
So, my question is, if you figure out where they are, do they keep figuring out where you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And like, do you win if you get it before they do?
Yeah.
Excellent, so what's your guys' record?
We don't keep records.
Oh, well, if you were going to guess, do you think you guys usually figure it out before they do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good for you guys.
They're really good. They are really good.
Okay, so what's the fastest you've ever guessed where the other?
Um, five guesses.
Well, I think it was three guesses actually.
Yeah, three guesses.
Three guesses, that's pretty good.
They're pretty good.
Yes.
Our first one wasn't quite like that. It took us a while to get organized and, you know, develop our system of how we wanted to do it.
Anybody else have any other questions?
What was the hardest place?
Uh, I think?
You're the one in California, could be other place in town too?
Yeah, we had to go to town too.
Oh, right, the classroom in California decided that they wanted to go all the way to the town, and we had never done that before, so thank goodness for Google Maps. We just kept zooming in. And they eventually got it, but it was tough, and they had a hard time finding Littleton. Big surprise. I don't remember. I don't remember.
Yeah, we won. Because they were like guessing, are you Lawrence? And then you gave him the hint, we were east of Boston.
West.
West.
That's not a good question. Which is fine, if that's what you want to play.
Exactly, stacking the odds, right.
All right, Daryl?
No, this is just wonderful. I mean, it's, you know, the teamwork involved in it and the developing strategies on how to zero in on it. I think this is an excellent way of introducing a whole bunch of different concepts into the classroom, really.
Yeah, it started off as a way to enrich our social studies curriculum, our geography curriculum, but if you notice from the video, like, there's just so many other skills that are at play while we've developed this game, and that's kind of what keeps us keep doing it. You know, it's more than just a five-time thing. I think the more we do it, the more exciting it gets, and the more we learn from it.
And it's more fun than just taking a book and just reading from it and learning where it, that place that way. Yeah.
So you guys are in fourth grade now?
Yes.
So you hoping to pull it all the way up to fifth grade and do it again next year?
Yes.
That's the plan? All right, that's a good plan. Excellent. All right, anybody in the audience who'd like to ask any questions or comments? All right, thanks guys. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move into recognition?
We are. Well, you bet. It really makes our evening when we have students come out and visit us, so thanks so much. Certainly is a reminder to all of us at that front table here that everything that we do, every decision that we make, is in the best interest of the students that we serve. And having presentations like this really reinforces why we do what we do, and it's exciting that we're using technology in our classrooms, and it's really a learning tool. It's not separate, it's part of what our students need to learn and prosper and develop 21st century skills that are essential in order for success. So, thank you again for joining us this evening. I hope you join in my excitement this evening. Tonight, we're going to award our first Teaching in Excellence Award for Littleton Public Schools. And we set some criteria in regard to the award. The recipient, award recipient is chosen by the principal, we have four of them a year, and tonight, we're going to be honoring a teacher from Russell Street School. The criteria that we look at involves, we look for teachers who model deep engagement, mastery of their subject matter. They set high expectations for all students. They establish classroom learning environments that are based on mutual respect. They effectively address students' different learning styles and needs. Utilize creative and innovative instructional techniques, including the integration of technology, 21st century learning skills, and interdisciplinary connections. Continually engage in experiences that improve practice, maintain professionalism in communications and interactions with the school and community. A tall order, but I'm very pleased to say that we have many great teachers in our district. And as Principal Buzidlo figured out, it's very, very difficult to choose somebody, only one person from each school, but throughout time, many of our teachers will have this prestigious recognition. It's great pleasure and honor that we're able to award the Teaching in Excellence Russell Street certificate and plaque to Mrs. McGregor. Congratulations. We have something we'd like to read before we have the official ceremony, so to speak. Mrs. McGregor is an invaluable member of the Russell Street School faculty. She is well-respected by colleagues, families, and her students. Mrs. McGregor is known for outstanding use of instructional technology while always keeping the curriculum frameworks at the forefront. She effectively provides technological opportunities for students to enhance their learning. Not only has Mrs. McGregor served as the RS at Russell Street School building-level technology leader, but her students are regularly displaying their 21st century skills, and we saw some of that this evening. Mrs. McGregor leads her class in Mystery Skypes, excuse me, as well as maintains a YouTube channel. She posts classroom videos, and students may participate in create-your-own-challenge videos as well. Last spring, the families in Heidi's class gave her a green screen, and as a result, her students have been creating a variety of educational projects. Mrs. McGregor is a leader at Russell Street School. She has served as a team leader and a member, a team leader and member, participated in school council, played an active role in creating standards-based report cards, and is a previous recipient of the Golden Apple Award. Mrs. McGregor coordinates multiple field trips for her grade and has been responsible for planning this year's grade four social action project, Relay Recession, which supports the Littleton Relay for Life efforts. Mrs. McGregor is a tremendous ambassador for the Littleton Public Schools, and Mrs. McGregor has been invited to present at MasQ Conference at Gillette Stadium, and will be a faculty member at the Q Rock Star Teacher Camp in Boston this summer. MasQ is a technology conference, it's a national conference. We have a pretty pronounced presence at this conference every year, with staff taking part in it and also presenting. So we have schools from all over the country that come to see what's happening within the Littleton Schools district by sending our teachers out to that conference. Mrs. McGregor has many parents in her classroom volunteering during science and engineering lessons. As a member of the PTA Cultural Enrichment Committee, her professional reach beyond her classroom benefits her students, colleagues, and Littleton Public Schools. Mrs. McGregor is a model educator, has achieved what I call excellence, that's why you're receiving the Excellence in Teaching Award this evening. And on that note, before we do the presentation, I'm going to ask Principal Buzidlo to say a few words.
It's interesting standing up here while I do this, right? The Russell Street community is extremely, extremely fortunate to have Mrs. McGregor on our team. She's presented in this venue several times, and as the synopsis here indicated, not only is she a tremendous educator and extremely student-focused, but she's also very, very dedicated to her own professional learning, the professional growth of others in our community. And I echo everything the superintendent had to say, and it's my honor tonight to present her with Excellence in Teaching Award.
Congratulations. Not only do we present a plaque to Mrs. McGregor, I don't know if I want to say this in front of your students this evening, but Mrs. McGregor will also have $500 to purchase materials for the classroom. So now you have some of your class already thinking about how they're going to spend that money. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We should probably get a pose for the camera here. A little crowded up here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations, you pulled your plaque. And I'm sure the school committee would like to congratulate you.
Yes, thank you, Eddie. We have seen you here, met several times. It's always more fun when you're here than when you're not here, and you have your kids here, there's no question about it. I mean, part of it is just because it's obvious the stuff you're doing in the classroom resonates with the kids, and it just helps us understand what's going on in the building and realize that, you know, even though we don't get a chance to be involved day-to-day, it's good to know that that kind of stuff is going on, and, you know, my kids unfortunately get a chance to have you as a teacher, and I know they regret it. But all these other kids are very fortunate to have had that opportunity, and hopefully be here for many more years and keep working your magic year in and year out with all the future generations that come through. Alex, do you think, do you think you want to echo on those lines, or?
Yeah, I want to, I won't echo anything that Mike has already said, because he said it very well, but there's so much that you offer to the district, not just in your own classroom, but to the other teachers, I think, in the building and throughout the system, throughout the district. It's, so we see you here at the school committee meetings, not infrequently, but even more often, I see Kelly tweeting about the next great thing that you're doing in the classroom, or Principal Buzidlo doing the same thing. And so it's great, because it helps the community understands how great our teachers are, but it also helps, I think, some of your colleagues, oh, hey, that's a great idea, maybe I should try that. And it's great for me because it brightens up my day.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you do, because teaching is, I think, one of the hardest jobs out there, and every time that we get to recognize that, I think, hopefully makes it a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'd like to echo their comments there and won't repeat them there, but I really like, thank you for the work that you're doing in the classroom, and then what you're bringing here. You helped us have a packed room tonight.
You told us the rule though, right? Like, they can't leave till the meeting's over.
Lock that door. There, but I really appreciate the work that you're doing in the classroom and for the community with the outreach and the other activities that you're involved in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the administration for putting something like that together. I know that it's a tough choice to actually have to make a final pick, but at the same time, I think that it gives us an opportunity to recognize a lot of candidates met those criteria, and really what we're picking is the best out of the best in that regard. And I think it's great that we can reflect on that and think about it, and using those criteria and iterating them like that, I think, helps us all understand what are we looking for in good teachers, and when we see good teachers, what are the criteria that we're measuring them by, and when we know we get it, then we're pretty much better off as a district. So, it's a great exercise, I appreciate that, and we would like to have more of that as we go forward. As you said, hopefully, many more teachers will come through, and we'll get new faces and.
Exposed.
So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. All right, next on the agenda, under recognition, in your package, you have some information about the Exxon Mobile Alliance Grant. They've been very generous supporters of our high school for a number of years, and we'd like to thank them for their contributions. The grant allows the high school to provide enrichment activities and also extracurricular opportunities for our math and science classes, and without that grant, it would be very difficult to be able to offer those activities for our students, so, thank you. A third acknowledgement that isn't on here, our Littleton Fire Department is very active in our schools, and this week, we had a mock hazmat drill at the high school with a number of volunteers, students included. It was very well done, and an essential component of what we need in this community. We need to be ready and prepared in case we ever. We need to be ready and prepared in case we ever have a misfortune or an event in this community that requires their services. And having mock drills like this just prepares us just in case. So I'd like to thank them for that. I'd also like to thank the fire department for coming into our schools every year and training our students and some of our staff in CPR. When our students graduate from high school, they've been certified twice, not once, twice. They've had the original certification, and then they have a re-certification prior to exiting our high school. Without our fire department giving us their time and helping out with costs and materials, this wouldn't be possible. So again, we're very fortunate to have a fire department that supports our school district the way that they do. So thank you very much for that. And that brings me to the end of the acknowledgements. So I was going to ask the principals, though, do you have any acknowledgements that you would like to present this evening?
I should also mention that the fire department has been out and shakily doing fire safety as recently as this past Tuesday, working with our kindergarten staff and kindergarten students. They're coming out again next Tuesday, and they've also made visits to all the first and second grade classrooms.
Great.
During the course of the year as well.
That's excellent. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our Yarbus Presentation. Every two years, our school takes part in a health and wellness survey in middle school and high school, and I'm going to ask Dr. Detweiler to introduce tonight's speaker. And he is no stranger to us. He's been generous enough with his time to come out to Littleton School District for a number of years, and we'd like to welcome you again.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and it's my pleasure to introduce Jim Burn. He has been a consultant to Emerson Hospital, working on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey since its inception in 1998. Tonight, he's going to give an overview of the study, as well as going to in-depth on the Littleton results. At our next school committee mini, there's going to be a presentation on how we are using these results and implementing them in our school. There will also be a link that we'll provide to the public after tonight's presentation so that the public can go on and also look at these results. Finally, I want to acknowledge the students who participated in this survey. Without their frank and their honest response, we wouldn't have the value of these findings. So again, we don't always get that insight into the private lives of our students, and I think some of the results are probably ones we don't often get to talk about, but they're very important to understand. And I also want to acknowledge Sarah Dorfman, who's here. She is our Head of Guidance, and again, she's one of the people who's always been very involved in implementing a response to these results. So again, thank you, Jim. Look forward to your presentations.
So before you start, can we do something about the buzz in the speaker?
There's some kind of shortcut in the system, and we don't know what it is right now.
Good evening. Thanks for having me back again. After every two years, I've been here since, I think it's 2000 or '02. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes giving you a little bit of a background on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. For those of you that may not have heard it, I know for some of you that heard it two years ago and four years ago, it's going to sound old, but I think it's important that I give a little bit of a background, what took place. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey was begun by CDC in 1989 and has been done nationally every other year since, done on a national level. It also was being done at the state level since 1995 every other year. The state does it on the odd-numbered years, and we chose, Emerson Hospital, chose to do it on the even-numbered years. We've been doing it now, so we, the process began in 1998, but actually first fully done in 2000 here in Littleton and other districts. There were, how it all began was that in 1997, the Executive Vice President of Emerson Hospital reached out to school districts in the service area that Emerson works with, and four schools responded. One of them was Littleton, a woman named Jan Stewart. I don't know if, I know she doesn't work here anymore. Some of you may know her. I think she was a teacher at Jackson's, is that, is this Jackson Street School?
Russell Street.
Russell Street. Russell Street. She was, that's right. Anyway, she was one of the originators of this project with Emerson Hospital back in 98. They brought me in to help them design the survey and work with them to put it together every couple of years. Right now, it's being done in eight districts, so when I talk about the aggregate tonight, I'm going to be talking about eight school districts, all of which are in this area, schools like Acton, Bucksboro, Littleton, Concord, Carlisle, Westford, et cetera. So this cycle, we began in 2013, in May of 2013. In fact, next month, we're going to begin the cycle for the 2016 survey. But the cycle began in May of 2013 for the survey that I'm going to discuss tonight, and we worked throughout the fall of 2013 to put the survey together. It actually took place, it takes place in the second week of March every year, every other year. And so in March of last year, exactly a year ago now, it took place during the second week, was implemented. The survey was implemented in Grade Six and Eight online. That's a process that began about four years ago. It used to be that all of the surveys were done on paper and pencil. Now it's done online for Grade Six and Eight. There was a Grade Six survey, a Grade Eight survey, and the High School survey. The High School survey is still done paper and pencil. In terms of the process, parents are informed in advance of the survey, usually three to four weeks in advance.
Is that about?
Yes.
What happened, three to four weeks in advance?
In the town of Littleton in 2014, only six students were exempted at parental request. So what happened, with the exception of those six students, all of the other students, 800, 1,000, whatever it is total, had the ability, Grade Six, Eight in high school had the ability to take, participate in the survey. In fact, what took place was that 630 students participated. That's a participation rate of 90%, which is extremely high. When you look at comparing the results of this survey, and I'll talk about this in a minute as well, when you look at that, most surveys you see are, they're surveying, well, for example, Zogby Polls or something, or U.S. News and World Report, Sols used to survey 5,000 people nationally and tell us what we all think, within a range of 5%. Well, we're surveying 90% of the students, which is extremely high. And in fact, this time, in Grade Eight, 100% of students participated, which is unheard of, really. And then, one of the things that we do is we set out a process of teacher instructions. So it's a one-page thing that every teacher uses when the survey is being implemented. What that offers is the ability to have consistency with the results and with the participation in the survey. We ask teachers not to answer any questions related to the survey while it's being taken, not until afterwards, so that there is no process where Mrs. Jones might answer it in one way in Room A, and in Room B, Mr. Brown answers it a different way, answers a question in a different way. We don't, we don't want that to happen, so we have consistency. In terms of validity, I think, I just, I think it's important to note that the survey was developed by CDC and the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the survey that we use comes from that process. It's being vetted nationally, statewide, every other year. It is a process that is very thorough in terms of what they do. We take it to the next level, I believe, in that, in a few ways. And one of them is that, of course, as I mentioned, we're surveying 90%. And I believe that's what it was for the whole aggregate, was 90% of students in these eight districts, encompassing a dozen towns around here. So it's not a sample. It's all students in attendance take the survey, with the exception of those six that were withheld at parental request. Steps that are taken to encourage reliability include, we developed a question booklet. Classically, what happens is that the survey is, has a question booklet and a separate bubble sheet. What we have done is we've created an answer, they answer right on the question booklet, so there's no chance of losing any information going back and forth between the two. We have used the teacher instructions, and then we encourage all school districts to implement the survey simultaneously. That is to say, in some districts, and I've experienced this in the past with other districts, the survey will be done over the course of the school day or even over the course of the school week. What that does is it gives students the opportunity to communicate with each other. If a student takes it on first period and they're talking to friends that are taking it sixth period, for example, that could have an influence on their responses. So what we try to do is have all students take the survey simultaneously. I think it's an important step, and that's not necessarily something that's done in a lot of other settings. There were some new questions every time. There are our new questions. I mentioned that we start the process in May of the previous year, and then we spend the fall going through the old surveys and looking to change them, update them, and a few changes were made to the 2014 survey from the previous surveys. They include adding questions on driving while using a cellphone to talk or text. Actually, the previous question was, have you used a cellphone to talk or text? We separated it out now, so we have two questions. One asks, have you used a cellphone to talk? Another asks, have you used a cellphone to text? We, obviously, safety issues, and we're looking at that. So that was the first time we've done that. We changed a question on sexual identity, so that expands that a little bit more and moves it around in the question booklet. We added some questions on stress, changed a couple of the focuses on stress. We added a question on e-cigarette use, obviously a big issue these days. We changed and added a couple of questions on internet electronic safety. So those were the kind of general areas that we looked at. I want to ask you, anybody in the audience or any of you folks, if you have any suggestions as I go through this this evening about possible questions for the future, please raise your hand or speak up, and we'll add them, and I will, my son is here with me, works with me on these projects, and he'll take down notes, and we will bring this to the committee, made up of each of these school districts, when the time comes next month and in the fall. This, often, out of forums like these, we will have questions come up that are very valuable and have helped us. I'm thinking back 10 or 12 years ago, when questions about self-injury, there wasn't anything on that in the previous to, oh, 2004 or something, and out of one of these forums, there came a questions about self-injury, and that's been a very important question. We're going to look at it tonight, in fact. So, and if you have any thoughts, please let me interject them. I also want to say that I find it easier, this is just for me, if you have questions, to ask them when I'm actually speaking about a particular point, rather than wait for the end. That makes them more, it goes with the flow, and it works better for me, if you don't mind. I want to, I'm going to now start by presenting some of the graphs that have been put together for this, for your report. I want to point out that as I speak, I'm going to say things like, we're moving in a positive direction, et cetera, but I want to temper that by saying, all risk behaviors are too high. So that's going in, that's understood. 3% or 4% suicidal ideation or 10% suicidal ideation is much too high for my standards. But if it's going in a positive direction, I'm going to speak positively about it. That doesn't mean I'm condoning anything, and certainly, I know you folks don't either, but I just want to put that in context. This has to be contextualized very much. And I want to make, I want to make comparisons to provide perspective. That's the, what we're trying to do here is get a perspective on what's going on, not necessarily look to cure all the ills. So, that being said, a couple of blanket sort of statements to begin. One is that overall, the risk behaviors are continuing to trend in a positive direction. For example, tobacco use, alcohol use, marijuana use, gambling, sexual behaviors, safety and violence-related behaviors. Generally speaking, they are trending in a positive direction. And in fact, I come with basically good news. There's only a few points that I want to make here tonight about the areas that I found of concern compared to previous years. Things are looking very good, things are absolutely moving in a positive direction. It's in fact incredible to me, having come out of the '60s and the '70s and looking at what was going on with drug use and alcohol use among young people, even 10, 15, 20 years ago, what, how it's improving so much. It's very, very good news. There are areas of concern. I'm going to touch on both, both of these, both of the positive trends and the areas of concern. They include things like self-injury, alcohol use at parties, AIDS communication between students and adults, and in particular, a few things in Grade Six that seem to be trending in a negative direction. It's hard to know for sure. I want to keep a close eye on it this next time, but things like eating breakfast regularly seems to be decreasing in sixth grade. Physical activity seems to be, took a dramatic decrease this last time. And sleep, also going in a negative direction, sixth graders I'm talking about here. So, all of that being said, are there any questions before I look at individual graphs from what I've said?
The only question I have is, we're talking about the aggregate of all the schools that were surveyed in this area, not Littleton in particular, correct?
When we talk about the aggregate, that's right.
Okay, there are going to be some slides that are Littleton-specific.
Oh, they're all Littleton-specific.
Oh, okay. All Littleton-specific.
They will be comparing to the aggregate.
Okay.
The aggregate.
And the aggregate is this area, the...
It's the eight school districts that I mentioned.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Including, Littleton is part of the aggregate.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, page 33. All right, I'm going to, I can't see it so well. This is, this, I will give you a basic background. The top, the first section of graphs that I'm going to look at, great majority of graphs that I'm going to show you tonight, the top section is current data, 2014, and the red is Littleton, the gray is the aggregate. And then how you compare to the aggregate, how Littleton compares to the aggregate. This box always looks at gender differences for high school, and this box down here is looking at patterns over the length of time, since we've been, since the survey's been doing, actually, only since 2004. We've been doing it since 2000, but we've been doing it so long now, we've run out of room on the graph. So we are looking at six iterations of the survey, but you can see definite pattern. What I wanted to point out here was that this is riding with impaired driver, meaning a student having used alcohol or other drugs during the past month. As you can see, quite a drop-off here for high school. This is the group you would be most concerned about, from 19% to 6% between 2012 and 2014, very positive, and you are half of what the aggregate is.
Just before going, Kelly, you might need to regenerate the one that's posted online because we're missing half the data in the graph. It's like one color printed blank or something.
All we've got is the aggregate. We don't have the Littleton-specific. That's why Mike asked the question.
Oh.
Yeah, I can have that.
So it just has the aggregate?
Yeah, we'll just focus.
Just to...
Are you sure that isn't the aggregate report?
I don't have access to the website page.
Are you sure that isn't the aggregate report? Does, is it the Littleton report?
They received both reports.
Oh, that's the aggregate.
Both the aggregate report and the Littleton report.
It would only have, that's what I wrote for the hospital.
It's fine. Let's go ahead and move forward. It's up on the screen. We're fine. We'll get it eventually. Don't worry about it. Go ahead.
Page 35. Weapon carrying, as you can see, very low. You're 2% in Littleton, 3% in the aggregate, and 3% where it's available from the state, the Gold Far, is the state Mass Department of Ed results. And so there's 3% there. Again, patterns, what I wanted you to see was carrying a weapon on school property. The question is, during the past 30 days, have you carried a weapon such as a gun, knife, or club on school property? And so the numbers have been as high as 8% in 2010, it's down to 2% here, quite a pattern of drop, and also a 2% drop for Grade Eight since 2012. There are certain questions in the survey that have something to do with, I don't know if it's the, where it's a school culture, but whatever's going on in the schools, and these patterns are showing very positive. This is obviously very good news, to see that decrease. I know you have a relatively limited time, so I'm trying to move a little quickly because I have a lot to get to, and I don't want to take your whole evening. Page 34. We have a couple of questions on bullying. The reason that there isn't longitudinal data on it, the second group, is that we've just, in 2012, the committee decided to change the definition of bullying in the survey, so we could not compare to previous years. And so next year, 2016, I will have three years of data to be able to give you some comparison, some pattern over time. But at this point, all we really can give you is, for the bullying questions, is the current data. So I wanted you to see what this is, and you are at 4% below the aggregate numbers.
Jim, if I can interrupt you just for a moment. Does the new definition that we use for bullying in the Emerson Hospital VRBS align with the same definitions used at the state level or the CDC level?
Yeah. Yeah. CDC, CDC, I'm not sure that CDC asks bullying questions.
Okay.
I don't pay as...
I don't pay as much attention to that as I do to the state question survey. But yes, they do, but there is a slight difference. And one of the things that I do as a consultant when we're, when the group is meeting, is that I try to point out, if you have, if you ask a question just a little bit differently from the way the state asks it, then you necessarily can't compare. So there, it is a very close comparison, but I don't know that it's going to be able to compare to the state numbers.
Okay, thank you.
But they felt that it was important to have a better definition than we had before for going forward, and that's why.
It's not the first time we've had something better than what the state will offer.
Oh, no. In fact, the self-injury question that I mentioned earlier, we were, the Somerson Project was the first people, the first group to ask those questions, that question, in the state. And, yeah, we're very, I'm very proud of that anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Page 30, 30, was that 34, 36? Again, this is a bullying question, looking at grades six through 12, six, eight, and nine through 12. And you are identical to the state, to the aggregate numbers. Again, the definition changed, so we don't have any longitudinal information. Now, this is the self-injury question. It has to do with during the past 12 months. And you can see, this is one of those that I mentioned a concern about. When I say I have a concern, I'm trying to, two things I would use to judge that. And it's not moving in a positive direction. It's either moving in a negative direction, or it's remaining unchanged over a period of time. And that's what's going on with the self-injury question. It dropped from 2004 down to 11 percent in 2008, but it has stayed the same ever since. I'm pointing it out as something that I think we would like to see it continue to decrease. And it doesn't, it seems to be a pattern of staying very steady for quite a long time now. And I think it's something, I wanted to point that out. The same thing is true, by the way, of, it's beginning to at grade eight. Your, the positive side of this is you're below the aggregate and state numbers on this particular question. Okay, 40.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Sorry.
Go back to, go back to 30 days, John.
So we're seeing a flatlining of this number in Littleton. At the aggregate, are you seeing a flatline?
Pretty much. Let me see, I can tell you. Yes, it's higher, but it's, the last four years are 13, 13, 14, 14. But basically, it's got a flatline there. Number four. Page four. Okay. This is seriously considered suicide. One of, there's a couple of things about this I want to point out. The distinction between females and males, 10 percent of females say they've seriously considered suicide during the past 12 months, only 2 percent of males here. That's fairly consistent difference, by the way, in the aggregate as well. You are seeing a decrease there. I wanted to point out, grade six and eight, for some reason, grade six is showing, 6 percent of students said they had seriously considered suicide in the past year, compared to zero the year, two years before, and 2 percent four years ago. And at the eighth grade levels, was a slight increase from five to seven. I don't know what this means, but I think that it's important to make note of this, especially in light of the fact that I'm going to be pointing out a couple of other areas of concern for grade six. I think that it's important. Not, I often have a tendency to really want to look at the high school numbers because there's a larger group and there's so many more questions at the high school level. But I think it's important to pay attention to those. Also should just mention that in terms of size of the survey, the grade six survey only asked 62 questions. The grade eight, 89, and the high school survey asked 112. So it goes up by developmental ability to respond to a lot of these questions. For example, in grade six, we asked no questions about sexual behavior, obviously. So there are very clear differences, and there is a lot more information in the high school survey. All right, 41. This is having attempted suicides during the past 12 months. So, four, one, two, three, four, five iterations of the survey. This is one of those, this is the, when people ask me, what's the number one question you're
So staying flat.
Staying flat, that's right. In grade eight, it has gone down from 5 percent in 2010 to 3 to 2 this time. most concerned about in the whole survey? What's the biggest, most important one? And I say it's this. To me, this is the number one. So it's actually lower in grade eight than there. And I understand that there's serious concern about drugs and sexual behavior and all kinds And grade six is staying at one or two for the aggregate. of things, but this is the one that I want to pay most attention to, if anything.
I have a question about the way that's worded, the suicide question worded in comparison
Not to say that I wouldn't on the others. But I just want to point out that we are at a place where at least 3 percent of high
to the self-injury question. Like, is it really specified what attempted suicide is?
school students, 3 percent of eighth graders are saying that they attempted suicide during No, no. It is absolutely consistent with the CDC question and exact, word for word, and with the past 12 months. Now, I understand that this is half of the state number and below the aggregate number. the mass department of that question. They're completely exact, we just take it right from there. So in that regard, you're doing well. In fact, probably, of the survey, of the high school survey, probably 85 to 90 percent But it is still a number that I would like to see go down. And I think that it's worth paying attention to it. That's why I'm pointing it out. of the questions are taken right from the state. It is definitely not trending up dramatically. That's where our primary source is. So it's, there are some questions that we've added, but certainly the suicide questions It's not, look at this 9 percent in 2004 among eighth graders. we haven't messed with at all, because we want to be able to compare to this, to the It's clearly not that. And I've seen school districts that are much, much higher. So I'm not trying to say that there's a crisis going on here, but I think that it's worth state numbers. Does that answer your question? paying attention to.
Is the time average trend of the aggregate doing, going up also, or not going down at
Yes, thank you.
Sure. All right, 42.
the lower level?
Right. There is a lot to be said about cigarette use, tobacco use, but the most important thing, I think, is the trend downward. You're looking at 0 percent, most, over sixth graders, 3 percent of eighth graders, and down to 17 percent of high schoolers have never tried cigarettes once, compared to 41 percent in 2004. And I know for a fact, the numbers were in the 50s in 2000. So it's, what a pattern. This is the, kind of the good news that I was mentioning earlier. This is really quite dramatic. And here, when you compare, you're basically the same as the aggregate, but you're basically half of what's going on in the statewide level.
The question on e-cigarettes, is that going to be in the next survey? It's not in this survey?
Right. There was actually a question, and I do, we do have, we do have one question on e-cigarettes in this survey. We did it, it's in, it's reported in the narrative. It's not, I didn't create a graph on it this time. But I can tell you that the answer is 17 percent.
This is the first time you asked that question? We don't have the trend data on that at this point.
Right, right. They just came up.
So it's the equivalent, at the high school level, ever tried cigarettes, nothing? It's equivalent, e-cigarettes with cigarettes?
Yeah.
Has that question been introduced into the statewide and national surveys?
I don't think so, but it may have, may have been, I'm not sure. If it has, it just was, it's just put in. It wasn't put in...
I feel that that's an evolving trend.
Yes, exactly.
That people are shifting.
It's a pretty new question, yeah, that's right. And what's going on with it is changing all the time. And you'll start learning more and more if you pay more attention. Let's see. Have you ever tried or used an electronic cigarette, parentheses, e-cigarette? And the responses are yes, no, or I don't know what an e-cigarette is. So those are, that's the only question we've asked on it so far. We have not asked 30 days or past year, just asked the one question.
That actually leads directly to a question I was going to ask about the cigarette smoking question, which is, I know that for many, many of these items, you ask several questions, have you ever tried this or ever done that behavior? Have you done so in the past 30 days? Have you done it in the past year? And you're, of course, only pulling some of that data out. Are you, is, I just want to make sure that this is, in your opinion, the most important question to ask, which I think makes sense with cigarette smoking, because if you do it once, you're much more likely to develop that addiction.
Right.
So that other data is still out there and available to the administration.
Right.
But what we're seeing is the most important of those, of that set.
That's what I'm trying to do. I could, I could literally, because I love this work, so you have to understand, I could do this all night. And I have, and I can drive people crazy, but I, but I realize that you have an agenda to get to.
Well, see, the problem is, I think...
In the past, it's always pointed out to me, you have 30 minutes, Jim, and it always becomes 45.
I think you and I would be here all night, I think we might lose some of my colleagues. But this is the most, in this case, you think this is the most pertinent question?
That's what I tried to do. What I tried to do was, the very next one, go to the next page. For example, recent cigarette use, we could talk about that, but I, and then, then we could talk about, what's the next one? Oh, cigars, right. In fact, that's a very good pattern right there. There's a very nice pattern going on with cigar use. It was fairly level at 14, 15 percent for years, and now it's dropped to 7 percent since 2010. I mentioned this only, I mentioned this particular point because what I have witnessed over the years is that often cigar use is a precursor, predecessor, I guess, to, to an increase in regular cigarette use. So if you see an increase, I've noticed this over the last 15 or 20 years. If you notice an increase in cigar use, believe it or not, in, you know, the year 2000, in '02 or '04, you're quite likely going to see an increase in cigarette use. So it seems to work that way, I don't know why, but there it is. But this is a very positive pattern for cigars. It's asking about cigars, cigarettas, and little cigars, is how the question goes. Is that? Okay. Yeah, I, yes. 45 is, again, some of the great news, the pattern of lifetime alcohol use is quite dramatic. Really, it was, in 2000, it was 83 percent or something like that. And it's down to 48 percent in the course of, what is that, 16 years? That's really quite dramatic. And it's a steady pattern that's been going on. And it's been happening with tobacco use and alcohol use. I don't, and I feel like I want to say that they're related, I can't say that, in fact, but I feel that they seem to go together somehow. Actually, they do, and I'll show you in a, in a graph later on where we do some relationships. But, but anyway, very strong pattern, very strong pattern in grade eight. And again, Littleton, good news, you're below the aggregate number and quite a bit below the state numbers. Interestingly, again, difference between males and females. Females are more likely to have had a drink of alcohol in their lives. Okay? Now, I'm going to, this is a question that we developed, and it's not asked at the state level, that asks, during the past 12 months, have you attended parties held in homes in your school district where alcohol use by teens is allowed? Therefore, it's implying, without saying it directly, that parents are allowing this to happen. And the reason I wanted to look at this question tonight, it clearly is a much more of a high school question, but what I'm seeing is, 19 to 20 percent is really not an increase, not yet, but it's not going down. What I pointed out is that the alcohol use, alcohol risk behavior is decreasing regularly with, we just looked at the lifetime, but also, recent use is decreasing, and binge drinking is decreasing. But at some level, for some reason, kids participating are attending parties, and here in Littleton, where alcohol use by teens is allowed by parents, is not decreasing. And you can tell my orientation to that debate, and I, so I just want to point it out. I think it's worth seeing. Question, okay. 49. Here's something, marijuana, I'm looking again at the high school, marijuana use, this is lifetime marijuana use. As you can see, it was '04, '06, and '08, 43 percent. It dropped to 39 in 2010, but it's continued to drop. This has been a real surprise to me. I've been looking at patterns of marijuana use over many years, and it's been staying steady in most communities, while tobacco use has been decreasing, alcohol use has been decreasing, marijuana's been stuck in the mud, so to speak, and staying right with it, not changing. And now it's looking like it's decreasing here in Littleton. And again, you're below the aggregate numbers and quite a bit below the state numbers. So I think that's a piece of good news, worth pointing out. Okay. I'd like the 54, John. I mentioned that a lot of behaviors are somehow, the questions are tied to behaviors at school, risk behaviors at school. This particular question asks about, during the past 12 months, have you been offered or given illegal drugs on school property? Clearly, you're seeing a very strong pattern in a positive direction. When we were, some years ago, when we were doing this, if I, if you had said, pretty soon you'll see 4 percent of high school students saying that they've been offered, sold, or given illegal drugs on school property, in any high school in the country, I would have said, you're joking, that's not going to ever happen. And now it's, it's actually taken place. I mean, this is quite, to me, remarkable. It's very good, very strong. And quite a bit below both the aggregate and the state numbers. So I think, again, I'm trying to show you some patterns within school-related kinds of question, and a very positive trends. Sexual behaviors, 57. This is the question about ever having had sexual intercourse. There's no gender difference at the high school, very, very low numbers at the, at grade eight. And now we're looking at what had been, I don't know what to make of this yet, and I, again, I remember I said I've had experience with these numbers, staying pretty steady over many, many years. By the way, one of that, what that does for me is that helps to validate the survey. If the, if the numbers are staying pretty steady, then, you know, over many, many years, 34 percent more or less, then that says that this, that this is not being really messed with by the students. A lot of people will say, well, kids are, how can you trust the survey that kids are taking? I think you can, and I think that it's quite clear here that that's going on. Now, we've got a, we've got a decrease from 34 down to 27 percent. I think it's worth noting, I'm not sure what it means, maybe, it could be 32 next time, I have no idea. But I'm looking to point out that I think maybe we see something going on. Again, you're below the state and the aggregate, well, slightly higher than the aggregate and lower than the state numbers. Again, it's, could be the beginning of a pattern, a decrease, I don't know. And then, 60.
Before you go on that.
Yes.
So you have, the aggregate is the eight district aggregate. Do you have the aggregate for grade 12, the equivalent yellow bar, for grade, just grade 12?
The gold bar right there?
Yeah.
Oh, no, oh, yes, that's not the aggregate, that's the state number.
Right. So do you have that state number for grade 12?
Yes, yes. I don't have it, no.
Okay.
That's in another...
But we could get that.
Oh, that's, sure, that state, that state report is public.
Yeah, no, the percentage seems very high.
Yeah.
There. And I was also interested to see how it compares in the broader context, or is it just a local...
Yeah, you're talking about right here.
Yeah.
But the state number might be there, yes. Yeah, there are, they are available, those state numbers. I didn't want...
Yeah, no, no, no. Maybe we could, see if we could get that number.
Sure. It's very easy, online to access.
Is this question also asked of the sixth and eighth graders?
No.
Might be a good idea.
A lot of people will say, well, kids are, how can you trust the survey that kids are taking? I think you can, and I think that it's quite clear here that that's going on. Now, we've got a, we've got a decrease from 34 down to 27 percent. I think it's worth noting, I'm not sure what it means, it maybe, it could be 32 next time. I have no idea, but I'm looking to point out that I think maybe we see something going on. Again, you're below the state and the aggregate, well, slightly higher than the aggregate numbers, below the, below the state numbers.
All right.
Fifty-nine. Recent sexual intercourse is during the past three months. Again, this, this is showing a decrease from 27 down to 22. And again, you're slightly higher than the state, than the aggregate and lower than the state numbers. Again, it's, could be the beginning of a pattern, a decrease, I don't know. And then, 60.
Before you go on that-
Yes.
So you have, the aggregate is the eighth district aggregate. Do you have the aggregate for grade 12, the equivalent yellow bar, for grade, just grade 12?
The gold bar right there?
Yeah.
Oh, no, oh, yes, that's not the aggregate, that's the state number.
Right. So do you have that state number for grade 12?
Yes, yes. I don't have it, no.
Okay.
That's, that's in another world.
But we could get that.
Oh, that's, sure, that state, that state report is public.
Yeah, no, the, the percentage seems very high-
Yeah.
-there, and I was also interested to see how it compares in the broader context, or is it just a local-
Yeah, you're talking about right here.
Yeah.
But what the state number might be there, yes. Yeah, there are, they are available, those state numbers. I didn't want-
Yeah, no, no, no. Maybe we could, see if we could get that number.
Sure. It's very easy online to access.
Does this question also ask about the sixth and eighth graders?
No.
Might be, might be a good idea.
Okay. The grade six, we do not ask any sexual behavior questions at all, and that was a decision years ago by the committee. The grade eight, there are a couple of questions asked, that I think they are only lifetime and have you ever had sexual intercourse, and the oral sex question. I believe that's all we've asked at the end, at grade eight. But I will, we will be taking notes, we're going to bring that suggestion back to the committee. Okay, so, 60. This is a question, oral sex is a question we have not been asking since the beginning of the survey. At the high school, we started asking it in '06, and at the, at grade eight, we started asking it in '08. The state still does not ask it at all, and as far as I know, neither does CDC nationally. So we have no ability to compare to them. Again, we're seeing a pattern of decrease from what was 41 percent six years ago, down to 32 percent. And it is a, it's fairly steady decrease, 3 percent or so each year, it's been decreasing. That's a very positive pattern, consistent with what we were, what we think, or I think we may be seeing with lifetime sexual intercourse. And the numbers are very similar, by the way, in terms of whether students participate in oral sex or, or classic sexual intercourse. So, I think that it's worth keeping an eye on, but it looks like it's doing fairly well. Again, you are identical to the, to the aggregate numbers. Okay? All right. 64. I'm going to, the next three graphs I'm gonna look at are, I'm gonna look at specifically issues around grade six. This one is the one on eating breakfast. It's framed, the question is, have you, during the past seven days, so it's a, it's a photo of a particular snapshot of a particular point in time, the past week before they take the survey, how many days have you had breakfast? And what we've done here is we've, we've said, if they ate breakfast on five or fewer days during the previous week, they would be included here. And so, some of these might have had breakfast only twice, some of them might have had breakfast four times or zero times. What's going on in, and so, what you wanna see is numbers going down, so they're eating, which means they're eating breakfast more. In fact, in grade six, it's gone from 12 to 24. Quite a dramatic increase in one, two-year period. As you can see, it is decreasing at grade eight and at the high school level. For some reason, it's taken quite a dramatic increase in grade six. I don't know if that, and, and you know, one of those, this is one of those questions, since it is a snapshot of a specific point in time, it could be that something was going on that week. I don't know. It wasn't school vacation week, it was the second week of March. So it's, I don't know if something was happening at the, is there one elementary school?
Oh, no, this is the middle school.
One middle school. Oh, six, grade six is middle school, okay. And there's one. And I don't know if anything was happening with the sixth graders there, no idea, but I think that's worth noting. Okay, never, page 65. This is the reverse. We want the numbers going up in this case. This is participating in vigorous physical activity three, for three or more during the previous, during the previous seven days. And as you can see, for grade six, it dropped from 90 percent in 2012 to 62 percent in 2014. It indicates that far fewer kids are participating, at least during that week, in physical, vigorous physical activity. I don't know if that means that PE classes were cut back, I have no idea what the indication is, but there's something going on there. But the other two levels, grade eight and high school, it's pretty much consistent. I'd like to see it increasing, of course, but it has, it's not, at least it's not decreasing. Okay. This is again, this looks at sleep. We asked the question during the past week, no, not during, during, it's asked, on average, how many hours of sleep do you get each, each night? So what we used for a standard was seven or fewer hours of sleep, we consider to be risky. And so, what has happened in grade six is that that increased from 14 to 25 percent between 2012 and 2014. Another increase in risk behavior among last year's sixth graders. Again, it's fairly consistent, kind of a drop here in, so meaning an increase or improvement in grade eight, slight improvement in high school, but a dramatic decrease in grade six. Yeah.
I'm wondering, with smattering of children across many of these grades-
Smattering.
Electronic devices. I don't know about that, but I got a bunch. Electronic devices. More and more kids are getting electronic devices younger ages. Many kids are sleeping with them, keeping in their bedrooms, and I'm wondering if that data is skewed because of that. So I don't know if there's some way to work a question, you know, do, do your cell phone in bed with you or next to your bed or something like that?
Or in your bedroom, do you have your-
Hand it to your dad when you kiss the knife.
How many hours of technology do you-
Number allows-
That is on one of them, or it's somewhere.
So technology having an impact on sleep?
Right.
I want, I'm, he's taking notes on this.
Devices are next to the kids' beds half the time.
Yeah.
And also on physical activity, I think, because I think a lot of times, kids will take part in, you know, doing online stuff instead of doing, you know, going outside and playing. A lot of them will be on Xbox or-
Yeah. True, it, it, but I think we saw a dramatic change in grade six. Maybe, maybe they are the up and coming, and so they're the youngest, and maybe that's, we're seeing a pattern changing that's going to be happening in eighth and high school in the future. You could be right. I don't know, we're not seeing that at the, as much at, at grade eight in high school, though, you know, we're not seeing that kind of thing. We're seeing a dramatic change in that one grade. And I, but you're right, it could be the beginning of something. Yes.
So you're saying you're not seeing, and, are you seeing, you're not seeing an increase in the, in the aggregate?
Right.
This is just us?
Right.
Which, I think, the sixth, sixth graders are our largest class, right?
Yes.
Seventh. Well, last year's sixth grade, yes, yes. Correct.
So it's the largest class we've got going through the district. Would that have any impact at all?
Well, it's a, it's a percentage, right. It's not sure.
I have to say that-
It's interesting.
Just from some, from the point of view of somebody that does this, that has been doing this kind of work for 20 years, one of the things that happens for me is that I see, when I see things like this, I say, aha, there is something going on with that class. I've had surveys that I've done in other districts, completely unrelated to Littleton, where you will see a risk behavior among 11th graders, a spike. And you, and, and when I, when I go back and I have an opportunity to speak with the teachers, they'll say, that's a class, that's a class you have to watch out for. When my sons were in high school back in the day, I, my, my, I had teachers of theirs saying, boy, my oldest son, they said, boy, is that class great, but the next group, oh my God. And I don't know, I mean-
Three years.
He promised you he wasn't gonna do this, too. Before I walked in, Dad, don't tell any stories about me.
But it's, it is, it is something that can happen, and I, and when I saw these little things going on with grade six, it made me wonder, and I want you to just hear that's, I don't know if there's any, if there's anything to it. Maybe there, maybe there are-
It's a rambunctious class.
It's a rambunctious class, but it's also the largest class we have, we've had in years. It's like 25 percent larger.
Oh.
So I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
And I think that the three, the three big behavior changes that we're seeing here are not even, not eating breakfast, not getting enough sleep, and not having as much physical activity, which are all very closely related.
Yes.
If you're, if you're not getting enough sleep, of course, you're gonna wake up later, maybe not have time for breakfast, not have enough energy, or it could be the electronics instead of the athletics or the physical activity. We don't know for sure, but I, I think if something were to change and fix, you know, if one of these numbers were to change in a more positive direction, I think we would also see the other direction change.
That's true. I think we bring Kathy Hibbert back for a couple weeks and smack her in the shape.
They're gonna need to sleep after that.
At some level, it's interesting to see how this might correlate with academic performance, such as results on EPCAS, which we might have the opportunity to actually compare.
Well, there is a question, you know, that we've done this, we could do this again, but we have a question in the survey that asks, let me read it to you, and it might be worth looking at. During the past 12 months, how would you describe your grades in school? A's, B's, C's, D's, like that. We could do a comparison between that and sleep.
Right.
Or that and physical activity, or, you know, pick your poison.
Right.
You know, that kind of thing. Absolutely, so that's good.
Just to clarify, the service, the results you're talking about with sixth grade, you give, the survey was administered in March of 2013?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna know because-
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fourteen. This is the 2014 survey.
So these are current seventh graders?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay. Yep. They're coming up.
Coming your way, John.
Look out.
You got a whole year to prepare.
That's right. That's what I made up.
I'd like to look at-
Your friends are middle school.
So that's basically this time, what we've done is looked at, we've gone through a smattering of the results from, from these perspectives, that is, current data, gender change, gender differences, and longitudinal data. I'd like to look at now another set of graphs. I know you have a lot to want to do, so I'll just try to keep what I have left brief. I'll look at a few graphs on stress and bullying, the, maybe, a little bit of a different way of looking at them. So, we'll start with page 69. This is a question that asks, well, it's actually three questions that ask about your level of stress, self-reported level of stress, related to whether it's academic workload, events in school, or pressure at home. And you can see that, this is grade six, I'm going to look in grade, at grade eight in high school in just a moment, but you see, the level of stress for, for the total for 2014, sixth graders were 42 percent compared to 24 percent for the aggregate. So quite a bit higher for grade six aggregate in terms of experiencing stress as a result of the academic workload. Does that make sense? Did I explain that clearly enough? The same thing is true, same relative difference, related to events in school, higher in the total compared to the aggregate, and regarding pressure at home, no difference. Relatively small gender differences, by the way, in there, too. This is one of those, I hope, and to look at, be able to look at longitudinally next time, more clearly. Okay? Now, go to 72. Same thing, the same questions for looking at stress for grade eight. Again, 58 percent of eighth graders say that they had somewhat high or very high levels of stress related to academic workload, only 43 percent in the aggregate. Or related to events in school, stress related to events in school, again, 37 percent in Littleton, 24 percent in the aggregate. And regarding pressure at home, same as with grade six, little or no difference. Okay?
These are 13 and 14-year-old girls, you see those spikes, the blue bars.
And then 77. And then this is the same, same seven questions for high school. You see, really, no difference at all, at all. Minor differences, actually slightly lower than the, than the aggregate for events in school and pressure at home. So little difference. The differences that we're seeing are particularly in grade six and grade eight. Okay? In terms of their self-reported experiences of stress, in particular related to academic workload and events at school, really not related to pressure at home. Okay? All right.
Could you help me a little bit there? I'm trying to interpret that in light of the sixth grade and the eighth grade being, the aggregate being higher, or sorry, the sixth grade being higher than the aggregate, and the eighth grade being higher than the aggregate, but when we combine it all together district-wide, or at the high school level, we're on par.
Right.
So are you, so, what would you, what does that suggest?
The sixth, the sixth graders and the eighth graders are self-reporting higher-
Than aggregate levels of stress.
Higher than aggregate levels of stress. And, and high school is not. High school is reporting pretty much the same. And it's, and it's only for those first two, academic workload and events in school, not for pressure at home. Some communities, it might be very different in another community, it's, this is the way it is here. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
70. Want to look at bullying here.
So just, just one interesting thing, I just pulled, looked at the, the-
Stress.
Stress at school, academic, for six, eight, in, in high school. For girls, it went 40, 67, 76, and for boys, 43, 48, 48. So the boys, it seems that six through eight, it seems to, six through high school, it doesn't really change that much. The girls go up there, even, you know, I mean, it's surprisingly high, but it gets higher, actually. Even though it normalizes out with the rest of the population, it's just surprisingly consistent increase on the female side more than the male side.
Do you remember, and I, I'm not saying that it's all the story, but if you look at certain risk behaviors, you remember I pointed out that suicidal ideations were much higher among females than males? I'm not sure that it's, I think there is some relationship there, though, in terms of experiencing emotions among high school-
Or expressing them.
What's that, or expressing, or, thank you, thank you, that's right. So bullying, again, this is, there are four. We asked, have you been bullied at school? Have you bullied someone at school? Have you been electronically bullied? Have you bullied someone electronically? And you can see that, and here, your 2014 numbers decreased quite a bit, being bullied at school between your 2014 and the aggregate. It increased from 2012 to 2014, right, from 11 to 8 percent. This is grade six again. Same thing is true here, then bullied at, good, then, I mean, bullied someone at school, then bullied electronically is higher than the aggregate, and bullied someone electronically is higher than the aggregate. Is that all fairly clear?
Do you know offhand if the 2012 aggregate data also jumps? So is that increase? If you don't have that on hand, that's fine. Curious.
Let me see, yes, I think I do. Yes, the page, which one, which of the four?
The, the 2012 aggregate.
For, for which? Then bullied at school?
Yes, sixth grade.
It was, it was 13 down to 11.
So the aggregate went down 2012 to 2014 in grade six?
Right.
Okay.
13 percent down to 11 percent.
Okay.
Yeah. The others are, the other, the bullied someone, or both regular at school and electronically, basically the same, but the then bullied electronically went down from eight to five. Five, see, there, it was 8 percent in 2012.
Sorry, eight to two?
Eight to five.
I'm looking at the 2014 aggregate, it says two for bullied.
This one right here, I'm trying, then bullied electronically.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, thank you. Yeah.
That went from eight to five.
Looking at the next one, though, bullied someone electronically with the 5 percent in 2014, going back to technology again, you have things like the anonymous yick yak and zigzag, whatever these ridiculous things that the kids are using, and they were, I know my kids are coming home saying, does this, basically Snapchat, without any paper trail, you know, there's this anonymous bullying going on. And it falls right into that timeframe.
Interesting. I was listening to NPR on the way down here tonight, and there was an interview with a CEO of a company called, I don't even know what they're called, a startup called Secret. It was a online something, I don't know what, but anyway, it was a, it was a web application, that's what, it was an app. I'm sorry, I just not all that into this, but, but, but the point is that, that this company was gone out of business because of too many kids bullying and people getting afraid of, a lot of, a lot of things were going on, on that app, that, so I thought it was kind of good news, actually, but then- kind of good news, actually, but yeah. Because of, because of things like online bullying were taking place, so, yeah. Okay, that was seventy-three. Wanted to look at, this is bullying also, it's the same four questions, then bullied at school in two thousand and twelve was seventeen percent, this is eighth graders, down to six, basically the same, so it's quite a dramatic drop there, and others, and then bullied electronically, quite a, quite a decrease from nine to five percent. Basically, you're more or less on par with the aggregate for each of those four in grade eight. Okay? And then seventy-nine. And this is the same thing, same four questions, looking at from a high school perspective, you have basically a slight increase, but really not an increase, six to seven doesn't count, two to one. Basically, you are at the same, same level in all four, except for, well, in all four cases, really, with the aggregate. Slightly lower in each case, just, or at the same, but not the kind of dramatic differences that we saw in grade six and a couple of these places. All right, one last question, one last thing I want to look at in this appendix B, number seventy-four. This was, this is a line graph, and this looks at three different behaviors all related. We have a few of these that we do in the report, you know, if you look at it, you'll see them, but this one, particularly striking, and I just thought it's worth looking at. This is three risk behaviors all related to alcohol, ever having had a drink of alcohol, used alcohol during the past month, recent alcohol use, or recent binge drinking. And I just wanted to point out how dramatically they have decreased. You can see quite a pattern of decrease from the time we started doing this survey and before to now, quite a strong pattern. And it looks at, this is one of those things you could show to anybody, and you could see that there is something very positive going on here. I think it's worth noting that. Okay. And then finally, do we still have a couple more minutes?
Oh, absolutely.
Is that okay?
Take your time.
Finally, in appendix B, page eighty-seven, there are, I don't know, a dozen pages of these kinds of things in the back of the last part of the report. What they are is behavioral cross tabs, is what they're called, and they're looking at two risk behaviors blended together to look at the relationship, if there is any relationship between them. I'm pointing out too tonight that among a couple of dozen, nearly thirty, I think, of these kinds of graphs, that to, to say that, for what it's worth, make it easy for you to look at it, if there is a relationship between the middle graph and the, and the third graph, in other words, if this is quite a bit higher than this, then there is a clear increase in the ability, in the likelihood of a relationship. So, basically, what this first one is doing is looking at, these are two different graphs, looking at, and this is grade eight, repeatedly being bullied at school, its relationship to seriously considering suicide. Okay, so, all respondents, seven percent of respondents seriously considered suicide in eighth grade, okay? Among those who repeatedly, who were repeatedly bullied in school, those who seriously considered suicide, forty-three percent, okay? Among those who were not repeatedly bullied in school, those who seriously considered suicide, five percent. So you've got quite a, does that, people follow that? It gets a little even difficult for me to explain, but if it makes sense, what you're looking at, if, if, for it to be able to be a graph and jump off the page, you want, you want to be able to see something. If this bar is much higher than this bar, then you know you have something of a relationship going on. I want to clearly point out, I'm not saying it's causal, I don't know that either it isn't, but I do know that there is a relationship there. Okay? So a relationship between repeatedly being bullied in school and seriously considering suicide. Okay? Again, the same thing, being repeatedly, being bullied electronically, seven percent say they seriously considered suicide, forty percent of the, among those who repeatedly bullied seriously considered suicide, only five percent among those who were not repeatedly bullied.
Those are basically identical, and the conclusion you could reach, even though you can't definitively draw a causation-
Right.
-you can argue that being bullied in school and being bullied electronically is the same effect on the kid.
That's right. You, you, and it's very close. That's right.
Interesting.
And that being bullied increases, whether there's a before or after piece, we, we can't know, but that if you're, if you're someone who's been repeatedly bullied in school or repeatedly bullied electronically, you're about, you're five, six, seven times as likely to have contemplated suicide.
Whether it was caused by-
Or, right, we can't say, we don't have a before or after, but-
Can't say that.
Has that correlation there regardless?
I'm not, that's what I want to be clear about, I don't-
Right.
Have people leave the room saying, well, we know what causes, you know, the seriously considering suicide, you know?
Right.
So, but yes, there is a relationship, and the more, the larger the, the larger the difference, the clearer the relationship. There are several, as you look through the report, if you have an opportunity, there are several of them where there's no relationship whatsoever. If you'd like, I'll show you a couple of those, but let me show you page eighty-nine. This is probably the most dramatic, and this is a relationship between recent cigarette use and recent alcohol use. This is high school, and twenty-three percent of respondents say they drank alcohol recently. Among those who smoked cigarettes recently, seventy-seven percent said they drank alcohol recently. Among those who did not smoke cigarettes recently, only twenty percent said they drank alcohol recently. Okay? One of the things that this is, you have to temper this a little bit by the fact that tobacco use is decreasing, which necessarily means it's going to have an impact on this, which is wonderful news, but there is a very clear relationship between this, this and this, that bar and those two bars, and that's what you want to look for on, on a page. Let's, let's go forward a few, and just, I'll show you. Here's another one, relationship between marijuana and sexual intercourse, seven, twenty-seven percent say they've ever had sexual intercourse. Among those who ever used marijuana, seventy percent say they've ever had sexual intercourse, and fourteen, fourteen percent among those who have not used marijuana. So it's quite a clear difference, and quite a clear, there's something of a relationship going on there. Okay? Here, this next one, and the delta talked to in school seriously considering suicide, because the, the number is seventeen compared to five, it's not as dramatic a relationship. Let's go right to that next up, that page, it's going right here. Here's a good, a good example of where there's very little difference. This is a relationship between feeling stress from events in school and seriously considering suicide. Six percent said they ser-, this is high school, six percent said they seriously considered suicide. Among those who feel high stress from events at school, that's one of those questions we talked about earlier, eleven percent said they seriously considered suicide, but only five percent among those who do not feel stress from events in school. So it's not nearly as clear a relationship. There are many of those. Is there another page? One more? Oh, yeah, here we go. Here is a question about looking at volunteering your time as it relates to alcohol use or marijuana use in high school. And you can see with these numbers, there's no difference. Volunteering your time has no, whether or not you volunteer your time appears to have no impact or no relationship to whether you drink alcohol. And, and there is a slight difference with regard to marijuana, slightly more likely to, among those who, among those who volunteer, slightly more likely to, am I seeing this backwards here? Excuse me, did not volunteer their time, it was, I was, I could. Sixteen percent said they used marijuana recently. Among those who volunteered their time, only nine percent. So there was something of a relationship there, but, okay, I, pretty much, that's what I had to show you this evening, unless there are other questions, or, like I say, I could keep going, but this is what I put together. Alex, do you have a question or comments?
Yes. Thank you, this is, I think, one of the most, for me at least, informative presentations we get, and we get a lot of presentations, so that's not, you know, that's meaningful. I think it's, we have many different ways, as a school district, to look at measuring academic success that, that students have, but it's really difficult to numerically look at how students are doing from a health perspective. I suppose we could look at participation in sports, which is pretty good in Littleton and things like that, but this is, the WRBS, I think, is a very instrumental tool for us in terms of looking at how we're doing in terms of educating our kids, not just in academics, but in healthy behavior. And of course, if you have healthier students, they're gonna do much better academically. And I think as we see in terms of stress in academics, there can also be, depending on how much academic stress they're facing, that can also have correlations with other negative risk behaviors. In terms of the sixth grade, I think we'll probably, that might not be a question for you so much, but I know Rita had said, Kelly had said that at a later meeting, we'll discuss action plans at the school-based level, which I think is fantastic, because there's a lot of information here. And I was talking with Rita about this before the meeting, and she emphasized that this is, this is not data that we're just gonna let, okay, we've had the report, we're just gonna put it on a shelf. It's very clear that-
I should interject here, by the way.
Sure.
Emerson very strongly supports action. They are, they've spent a lot of money and time on this over many years, and they are really strongly encouraging all of the school districts to not just let this sit, but to do something with it. Sorry to interrupt.
Excellent, no, that's, that's great, because I think one of the suggestions I would have is just a forum perhaps for best practices within the, within the aggregate districts, the eight districts. Particularly because these districts, we are much more similar statistically speaking to the other seven districts that take this survey than we are for the state. We're much more affluent, we're much more homogeneous-
Right.
-and our students tend to be facing the same sorts of issues. So I think if, if there's a forum for our administrators, I, I know we do some coordination with other school districts about these sorts of things, but if we see over time, let's say Acton-Boxborough is seeing a really high increase, a move in a negative direction in terms of academic stress, but at the same time Concord-Carlyle is seeing the opposite, or Littleton is seeing the opposite, it might be helpful for, for us to highlight this, maybe not even in a public way, but at least so the administrators can say, oh, what, what's going on in Littleton? How are you reducing your stress levels? And we can say, well, we've got this written in homework policy at the middle school, and start chopping that around to the other school districts.
I should tell you that that has happened over the years in these meetings that we have, the health educators will get together, and pretty, pretty quality people, I have this, really, they are, and they will get together and they will start sharing information just based on the results, oh, look, this is what we're doing over here, well, we got to try that. And so the information gets moved around, but it, I think it would be even better if it were something that was set up with that specific purpose, because we have the purpose of getting the survey put together and done. But yes, it's a great idea.
And the other thing I wanted to point out was, again, the sleep issue, which for sixth grade has been trending in, in the wrong direction by a little bit, we're not sure if that's a blip, or if that's the class, or if that's a trend, but district-wide, I think aggregate-wide, that's pretty, it's a pretty standard level of students who are getting enough sleep versus those who aren't. And the vast majority of students, not just in Littleton, but in every, in each of the aggregate districts, is not getting enough sleep.
That's right.
I'm sure you've read a lot about, and we've talked about in the past, about how the National Sleep Foundation thinks, agrees that adolescents need between eight and a half and nine and a quarter hours of sleep, and we can't get into, you know, quarter-hour intervals when we ask these questions, because we'd be here all night, but looking at the, we look at the seven-hour mark, and you can pick any number, but if you look at the nine-hour mark, and if you figure-
Oh, yeah.
-half of your students need more than nine hours and half need eight and a half, it's less than ten percent of students getting enough sleep each night.
Yeah.
And that's not unique to Littleton, but it is a problem we face, and I think when we look at the breakfast, when we look at the physical activity, when we look at the stress, when we look at even drug use and car accidents and all sorts of risk behaviors, they're all very intrinsically linked.
Mm-hmm.
And so addressing one can very, it's a very easy way, or, or maybe not an easy way, but a direct way to influence another. So I hope that as we move forward, we look at how to address each of those, but also see which risk behaviors are connected, and then we can have a multi-pronged approach to addressing each of them. But I'm, again, very thankful that we had this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And I'm really looking forward to working with the administrators and seeing what our action plan is.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Obviously, you're passionate about it when it comes out, and I, I appreciate visuals, so-
Oh, yeah.
It helps, kind of-
Big difference, yes.
Just kind of-
And especially, we've got these years of, having the longitudinal data, just-
It's fantastic.
It, I feel badly for the school districts that are just starting doing this, and they've only got it one or two times, you know, what you have, what you have in here is a wealth of information, and I'm glad to see it shared, yes.
It paints a great picture for us, and it helps us to, you know, a better understanding. Thank you for all the work, for the presentation. I thank Sarah Dofman, the whole, the whole administration staff, and all those that are doing their jobs to try to affect the kids in a positive way, whether it be, you know, Tricia Monicore, Merith Perry, Sarah, the whole staff that is interacting with these kids on a daily basis to, to help them out, and hopefully we can use this information to help them to identify kids and get these trends going in the right-
I have to say, generally speaking, from my, just my own outsider point of view, you're already doing a lot of that. Clearly, there are, there's far more positive information here tonight than there was negative or questionable, far more. So, I'm not saying, I'm not saying stop, but-
Right. Well, we recently have made some adjustments and investments in, in just these, these types of personnel, but I appreciate all your work, I appreciate all the work from the staff, and I, I think it's good information for us to have, and it's good for us to be able to collaborate with the, with the parents and share this information, post it on the internet, on the, the Littleton site, and be able to field questions from the parents, and reach out, collaborate with the parents like we do, so, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. All right.
No, thank you very much, it was very thorough. I've got a very good understanding of the data, and I'm kind of looking forward to our next meeting when we talk about the district actions there, but I also want to be cautious, there's, you know, not all of these are things the school and the school committee can do. We don't tell parents how many hours at night their kids should sleep. That's controlled purely at home, and, you know, making sure parts of the parents getting those messages from what we're seeing in the schools, and how they may have to look at what's happening at home, but we kind of have a boundary as, as far as we go on this.
We can share the information.
We share the information, but-
Show the data.
-we're not gonna be implementing any corrective changes on the number of hours of sleep a child receives there. That's something parents are gonna have to start looking at, their responsibilities in, in some of those activities.
I just wanted to say thank you, you always come out and know exactly what areas to hit on, and it's appreciative for somebody that reads the whole report, and there's a lot of information in there.
Oh, good.
You always tease it out perfectly.
You read the whole report?
I did.
Oh, you're one of the few, wonderful. You're the guy. It's a lot. Happy to know that.
Another thing, sometimes we take things for granted, and this is a unique relationship with Emerson Hospital, with the school districts. This doesn't happen nationally, and we've been doing this for a number of years, and it's a, it's a credit to Emerson Hospital and, and school districts for realizing the importance of doing surveys and, and looking at some quantitative data. Caution in terms of quantitative data, it is not contextual. You look at coefficients, and one of the dangers of quantitative data is people always have a tendency to want to add context to it. You're looking at coefficients and variable relationships or, or non-relationships, so this is a start to looking at this, as we've done every year, teasing it out, and then trying to, trying to add some context to it as well, through, through other means. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. What I would like to say is, this is the fourth one I've seen over the years.
Right.
And Alex started to talk about it, it is by far the most compelling presentation that we get, because it's so wide-ranging and so impactful on the lives of our, of our kids, beyond the building, you know, beyond what goes on, and Darryl kind of alluded to that in the district, you know, in the buildings, so it's very meaningful. And Rita, I think, really summed it up perfectly in her introductory remarks, it's important to understand this stuff, even if we find it, you know, disconcerting and worrisome to think about that any of this is going on, you know, we have to be able to understand that it is, and it's important to address it and think about it every couple of years. It's, it's very important. And I'd like to thank, Chuck said we'll thank the staff, but also the families for letting their kids, you know, go through this, and the kids themselves, because you, you said it, Jim, you know, they are answering truthfully. You can see in the statistics that they're answering truthfully, and that's not always easy for them to do.
That's right.
You know, so we appreciate them doing that, because it is extremely meaningful and compelling.
You know, so we appreciate them doing that, because it is extremely meaningful and compelling. And I am looking forward to the action plan. And one thing, just, I want to say this out loud, because I'll forget to say it the next time we meet to talk about it, is, you know, it is a voluminous report. If we can think about summarizing it from a Littleton perspective and hitting the highlights and being able to put that out to the parents, I think we're gonna get a lot more bang for our buck on that than having them consume something like this, which they just won't be able to do in terms of time or effort. I think that'll be one thing you guys wanted to think about as we, you probably already are, but I just want to make sure I said that before I forgot it. So, thank you.
Sure.
If I could just jump in on, just to piggyback on what you just said, like, the fact that the kids are honest and open is because I think we have created a really trusting environment, an environment where the kids feel as though they can be, they're not threatened, or very little ones can come back and fight them. So, and that's a tribute to the district as a whole.
Absolutely, it is, yeah. Really, very, very, as I've said it already many times, very positive news here tonight, very positive trends. What I do, what I, as I prepare for a presentation like this, I spend time looking, trying to find, okay, what are the negatives, because, or what's the pattern? First of all, it's a great pattern, everything is going, so I have difficulty finding things to be critical about, if you will. I don't mean critical, but looking for negative trends, you know?
Opportunities.
Because everything is really doing well. I mean, generally speaking, and it's very positive, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentations.
But just before we start, the high school presentation, I noticed we have Dr. Hogan in the audience this evening, snuck in. And Dr. Hogan shared some news with me today, and I think it's fitting that, since he's here this evening, we have two students that are doing some unique things in the summertime. So, Dr. Hogan, would you mind talking about those two students for a minute?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, there's somebody in the flight.
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, I just got some news today about two of the students in the engineering and physics program. One of them's, you probably know both of the families. Adam Gentili is one of the students, he's been accepted, he was accepted previously at Pittsburgh State to do construction management, and as a result of a contact he made when we had a field trip to SRS, New England, which is doing the construction on Route 2 and 495, he's now got a, basically a flexible job. He can be there as many hours as he wants for the entirety of his college career, and probably, hopefully have a job with him afterwards, so.
Knowing Adam, he will be there many hours.
Adam is one of the nicest, one of the nicest kids in the school, I better say.
Oh, Adam Gentili, or?
Yeah, Adam Gentilheim, yeah, sorry.
Whatever.
You're right.
You had half of it, anyway.
I'm also impressed with Darryl's daughter as well.
Oh, the Mike's kids.
Let's move on, let's move on.
He says he's gonna finish all the labs.
Yeah, he'll get there. They all do, even if it takes until the VNS September. They don't like it hanging over them for the summer. And the other person is Katie Bradford, who you've heard from before. She's been helping with the middle school engineering club. And I'm really, really happy for Katie. She got accepted into a very selective program at Northeastern University for the summer as one of Northeastern University's young scholars, where she actually gets to do real research with a university professor in the group. This is the third Littleton student that we've had do that. The previous time was I got, managed to get two students, Peter Offson and Cam Jones, together in one year. But, you know, you've got to be careful about who you put forward, because they want to make sure that they've got someone who's actually gonna be productive with professors, so the professors will be willing to take them again.
That's great news. Thanks, Dr. Hogan. It's a direct reflection of the work that you're doing. We have an opportunity with you in there, and you're taking advantage of it, the kids are taking advantage of it, that's great to hear. Thank you. Both of those kids sleep an average of nine hours a night.
They do.
At least on the weekend, they do.
Our next presentation is a presentation on post-secondary outcomes. We look at students enrollment in universities after the, within a 16-month period after graduation. And Principal Harrington will be leading the presentation, assisted by Jerry Litten, Jamie, and our director of curriculum, if necessary. She's there to back you up, John.
Thank you, Dr. Jamie. We spoke this afternoon, and he's given me the reins tonight to lead the presentation. It's a brief presentation, I know you've been through a lengthy one. And there's no really major surprises at all tonight in regards to post-secondary enrollment for our school. This is data that we report out each year, it's widely available. But I'd like to just highlight some things for you, so I'll jump right into it if I may. Tonight's presentation is centered on the post-secondary performance and outcomes of students who enrolled in public or private post-secondary institutions. Data is from the Mass DESE, or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Database, it's called Edward Analytics. And it's also based on information from the National Student Clearinghouse, that tracks students after they leave high school. The table that you see projected there shows the post-secondary enrollment of LHS grads over a seven-year period from 2008 to 2014. And this is based on their enrollment within 16 months after high school, rather than the immediate fall after their graduation. And this accounts for students taking what's called gap time, or gap years, and time for study or work. Not every student enrolls right away in the fall, as we know. So it's more likely, it's nice to have this added time period. The data show a consistent trend for enrollment in two-year and four-year colleges for the past seven years. Our percentage of LHS graduates attending colleges consistently in the mid-to-high 80s with a median of 86. The state median is 74%, so we're 12 points above the state median for post-secondary enrollment. And we keep in mind that when we report on data that we're a small high school, and so our sample size is obviously, has fewer students. The disaggregated information for the subgroups in your packet, there's disaggregated information about different subgroups with characteristics related to English language learners, students with disabilities, high needs categories. Just so you note, you'll see some blank spaces if you looked at the nitty-gritty of the report. And it's important to note that students in those subgroups, such as low-income or English language learners, is not reported in some areas for enrollments fewer than six, and for performance results that are not reported, performance results that are reported for totals fewer than 10. And that's a common Department of Elementary and Secondary Education practice. Those press values are displayed as blank. So if you notice that and saw, why doesn't this add up to the total? That's why. You'll see, again, a seven-year comparison there. We are substantially higher, not only higher than the state, but we're also, overall, but we're also substantially higher than the state average for high-need students and students with disabilities who enroll in post-secondary education for all years. And just to give you a sense of that, and this is in the report, you all have that front of you in the packet. In 2010, 90% or nine out of 10 special ed students, and there were that many, enrolled in post-secondary education. 87% or 13 out of 15 of high-need students enrolled in post-secondary education. In 2012, 87.5% or 21 out of 24 high-need students enrolled in post-secondary, and 93.3 or 14 out of 50 special ed students enrolled in post-secondary ed. And I'm highlighting this because these percentages are quite high for those high-needs categories. In 2013, 92.3% or 12 out of 13 high-need students enrolled in post-secondary education. And in 2014, 87%, 20 out of 23 special ed students enrolled in post-secondary education. We're proud of that statistics, because it's reflective of the high-quality instruction and support they receive through our special education program, pre-K to 12. You will, I'd like to just acknowledge the difference between 13 and 14. You'll notice that there's a drop there. In 2013, that cohort of 89.4% enrolled in post-secondary education, and it goes down to 79.8%. We do expect, some of those students in last year's graduating class, just about a year ago, that some of them, I know of one or two, certainly one is going to enroll this summer in a program, a college program. He waited. And so, some of that flushes out, and so we do expect that the 13 data, the 2013 data might show a higher percentage. But there are other reasons for that, too. There are substantial cohort differences. Jim Byrne, who's presented about the YRBS data just tonight, showed cohort differences of real significance. And we see one here reflected in academic achievement. I went back and I looked at the SAT scores for the two different cohorts, and they were significantly higher in 2013 rather than 2014. The MCAS scores, when they were sophomores, in the advanced categories for ELA and math, were significantly higher for the class of 2013 than 14. Almost 20 points higher in each category, 20 points higher in English, and about 18 percentage points higher in math when they were sophomores. So we did, we were watching this trend over time as a cohort difference, and it's reflected in their enrollment in post-secondary education. But just to highlight the other thing about high-need students, there were 31 high-need students in 2014 last June compared to 13 categorized as high-needs the year before in 2013. 23 students with disabilities in 2014 compared to seven with disabilities in 2013. So I say that as a way, so, just to reassure you, that although you see that drop of almost 10%, there's a lot of context, as the superintendent was pointing out before the presentation, behind the numbers. We know the students, we know the situations, and so we're not, we're, we don't see that as a downward trend, we just see that as reflective of the cohort difference. But across the line, as you look over a seven-year period, you do see a median that stays consistently at 86%. So that's the data for tonight, related to post-secondary outcomes. No surprises, you've heard this data before, you knew we were around that range anyway from past presentations, but I hope I added some context and explanation around that drop from 2013 to 2014. I'm happy to answer any questions, and so is Dr. Jamie.
Just one comment. The participation rate in post-secondary education by our special education population is something to be very, very proud of. The state rate is fairly constant at about 56%, and it hasn't budged since 2008. And our rates are very high. So not only do we have very high growth rates with our advanced students and our MCAS exams, when we look at our special education population in terms of completing high school and going on, we have very, very high percentages. It just shows how we're actually dealing with that, with our diverse populations within our schools. So it's something we should be very, very proud of, certainly not to be taken lightly.
At 80%, I would just add, at last year's graduating class, almost 80% of them going on to post-secondary. We were thrilled with that number. We weren't surprised at all the year before, when we had almost 90% of the students going on to post-secondary education. But we were absolutely thrilled that a lot of those kids last year graduated from high school. There was a ton of work from the staff, the guidance counselors, and the special educators to make that happen, just the graduation from high school, so.
Darryl, any questions or comments? Yeah, a couple. I mean, you know, the breakdown on the SPED piece is very, very interesting there, and I think it's a great achievement of the students, and that also reflects positively in the district, but there. But just quickly looking at some of the numbers here, what looked interesting here is two-year colleges seem to be consistent over the, over all of the years there. There seems to be a steady decrease of moving towards out-of-state schools. And given that Massachusetts got a big cluster of, you know, very prestigious schools there, do we kind of have any insight in terms of the migration out of Massachusetts for some of our-
Why it's not as high as you would expect?
You know, from '08, it was in the 70s, you know, 67%. Now it's down, it steadily, you know, it's got the little bumps there, but it's down to 57% for in-state schools, meaning the other 43, you know, so there's been a steady increase in the number of out-of-state schools that they've been attending. Do we have any insight in terms of-
I'd have to ask the guidance counselors for that. I do know that a lot of the in-state schools are certainly attractive to students because of the cost and the lower tuition.
But the percentage is just indicating that there's a migration out of state.
And we had, for example, schools just over the border have become very attractive for our students. I think last year's class had, or was it the last year's or the year before, had about seven students in one class go off to UNH. The schools just north of the border are often recruiting our, you know, they come to our college fairs, they represent well the schools from Vermont, as well as from New Hampshire and URI, so.
Yukon.
Yep, Yukon. And so, you know, I don't know if they're giving our kids a break, I could certainly try to look into that.
It's just kind of interesting, you know, given that, you know, you know, the number of Massachusetts schools, and they're all pretty nationally-ranked schools.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that there are plenty of Massachusetts colleges that are not nationally-ranked, still fine.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And, you know, it may be very well that Littleton has made enough of a mark where colleges are marketing more aggressively to the Littleton students, and Littleton students are able to take advantage of it, and, you know.
Just one of those stats that-
I'm trying to get my kids as far away from me as I can. I'm just trying to get as far away from me as you can, so. There's gonna be at least one more.
You know, being in the, you know, looking at the group that is going to college next year, I mean, even talking to some other people at work and other places there on different areas of the country are actively recruiting, you know, for both Midwest, South stuff, actually offering better net packages for, you know, bottom-line cost, is actually desirable compared to what they could get for in-state costs here. Just interesting in terms of, you know, what's happening with the overall.
That is interesting. I think there's a little bit of an element of the alum coming back and, you know, at Thanksgiving game and things like that, and marketing the school that they're going to. And there's a comfort level for our seniors now, and then now it'll be the juniors, because the seniors, I think, have all pretty much decided.
They got eight more hours.
Very timely statement, right? But I think, I think our students do come back, and they do communicate, and it's such a small community that, you know, they're all friends. And we just talked about this, this cohesion that happens when the kids cross the threshold of high school. You know, that's why you see some of these numbers trending downward, and the bullying, and the kids don't really form-
A lot of colleges and universities purposely seek geographical diversity, so it can be an advantage, where if they offer an attractive financial package for a student from Massachusetts to come, go down south, one of the things I noticed were, if you had a few kids go down to the University of Alabama, and we had, last few years, we've had a number of students applying to go to South Carolina, some of them in Florida as well. A lot of those kids, when I asked them about it, there was weather-related, but it was also sometimes specific programming. We had a student head down to Florida in one of the recent cohorts to learn how to, he wanted to be a pilot, and he went to a very specific aviation program. Yeah, you know, and so, he's doing well. And, yeah, he's already been up and flying, so, you know, there, you know, just a number of stu-, we see a lot of our students applying to the same schools and matriculating at the same schools, too, that are out of state. So it might be something onto what Chuck is saying, you know, with word of mouth spreading. And, you know, I think a lot of it does come down to the financial packages that they're offering, because it has to be pretty competitive, I would say, to go up against the in-state rate that Massachusetts public colleges would offer.
Well, despite the financial packages, when you think back to when you were 17 or 18 years old, our kids are taking risks, and they have that confidence. And part of that reason is we focus on the whole child. It's not easy to, when you're 18, 17 years old, to pack up and go to California, or perhaps Canada.
No.
Yes, it is true. We do have students apply to Canadian colleges every year, and there's a number of outstanding students.
Well, I mean Brunswick especially, with the dollar difference, Montreal, Toronto, yeah. So I think that's something that was worthy of mentioning, it's not just about the bottom dollar, it's also about confidence levels. That's a pretty big move for young adults that age to make.
Yeah, so regarding the 15-month post-graduation, looking at that as a snapshot, rather, immediately, I think it's great, another way to- immediately, I think it's great, another way to look at it, because you're right, a lot of students do wait to go immediately into college. What I'm wondering is, we also see that, so, the further you get post-high school graduation, you'll see more students going into college, but you also see more students leaving college without having completed a degree. So, just as a question, do you think that there's generally about 15 months, are we seeing more of our students enrolled in college than we did when they immediately graduated?
Are we netting out, like, so for every kid that goes in a year late, is there a kid that drops out and doesn't finish out?
After 15 months, after the 15-month interval, because we all know there are students who, and that is a problem nationally, that students don't, aren't completing their degrees on time, which is another issue. I'm just wondering from a, from choosing, and how this is a question.
Interesting question, Al. It's an interesting question. You know, the level of persistence to, and their ability to, you know, withstand the rigors of college. We do get feedback, anecdotally certainly, that our students are prepared, feel well-prepared. And that's one of the sort of my answers with the faculty to say, we want our student, and certainly with guidance, we want our students to be as prepared or better prepared than any other student from another public high school in the area, sorry, in Massachusetts. And we get feedback from our students all the time. I know Dr. Hogan, we still get, you get feedback all the time, and you recently passed along emails, it seems like once a month, about a student who's saying he's, he or she is doing very well in college and feel very well-prepared. You know, there are a lot of variables along the four-to-five-year trajectory that you're talking about in terms of completion of a collegiate degree, university degree. A lot of things impact their life after their time with us, pre-K to 12, that, you know, Littleton High School or Littleton Public Schools has very little impact on or any, you know, any real connection to it, so a bit tenuous. We can't take necessarily total credit for their completion of college.
Or...
Or their lack of completion.
Right.
So, but, we certainly feel that, you know, we're justifiably proud when our students go on and complete college. And, you know, it's a really intriguing question, to see where we would match up with the, sort of, the national statistics of students taking longer and longer to finish, there's a lot more gaps, students taking beyond five to six, seven years to complete college, students taking a year or two off, moving back home. You've read the stories and heard the stories. So, yeah, I would hope, I think we'd match up pretty well with those stats, though, just from what I hear.
We looked at those stats last year, they were Edwin's stats, those four-year and five-year post-graduation statistics that we got through Edwin, through similar reports. I would love it if we could see those at a later meeting, because I thought that was very valuable, how last year we were looking at our four-year and five-year post-graduation graduation rates or college completion rates. I do really think that this, this is a different report with different information, and I really want to commend you, Dr. Harrington, Kelly, and then the district as a whole, those special ed numbers of special ed students who are enrolling in post-secondary education programs are amazing. And particularly in Littleton, where we have a special education population that's 20% above the state average, that's vital, that we're servicing these students as well as the general population. So, I think that's something that I, I think our administrators are very tuned into, and our guidance staff as well. So, it's great that we're pushing these kids to the best of their ability.
As Darryl pointed out, to the perseverance and work ethic of the students and support they receive from their parents, too. It's worth acknowledging, we work as partners to make that happen, and it's, I mean, it's a really great number. We are significantly higher than the state average when it comes to students in high needs categories, completing high school education, and then going on and enrolling in post-secondary education. These stats from the state do not necessarily include numbers that Mrs. Cormier tracks for us in guidance for students who are enrolled in certain trade schools that might be a two-year program and things like that. She's, she actually was, she and I talked this week, and she told me that our numbers are a little bit higher, actually, than mid-80s when you actually account for some of the specialized programs that the state doesn't necessarily track, that are PG programs. She does track that, that's why those programs are listed on our school profile, if you see a difference in the numbers. Our numbers on our school profile are higher, because we have very specific data about our students, we know them, and so, she knows a lot of them personally, and she's able to account for them in statistics that are featured on our school profile.
So, if you see that difference...
I just want you to understand that, yeah.
Another area that might, it's not going to skew the date that much, but I know of one student who is a high achiever, and there's one school that the student wants to go to, and been guaranteed a slot next year, so may actually take a gap year and do some, you know, take some classes and that kind of thing.
Sure.
So, those are, I'm sure those are some numbers that Miss Cormier is tracking as well.
She does.
But, there's that end of the spectrum as well.
And then the other, just to finish my thought here, the other piece of information that we saw last year, but just isn't included in this particular report, is the percentage of students who are taking at least one remedial course when they enter, when they enter post-graduate post-secondary education program. Usually, we'll see that in public universities slightly more than private universities, but we see it in both. That was very good information, I think, for me to have, and I think it's really important information that I think we all thought was very interesting last year. And that is something we have an impact on as a school district, if you're going off to college and you're required to be taking remedial courses.
That's very well said, yep.
There are some issues there. And then, that also has a very high correlation with how quickly you are to finish your degree or if you're going to finish your degree.
With increased cost along the way.
With increased cost along the way, which, of course, the higher the cost, the more likely you are to drop out sometime in between, just because you can't pay for it, it might not even be academic or your interest vary, but it could just be about the money. So, that's all very useful information I was really, really excited to get last year and about the catalyst here out of the way to take, if that's possible.
I'm trying to recapture my thought. Having been a superintendent in an area with a large university, we, or I obviously had a lot of opportunities to chat about these things, and, you know, in essence, across our nation, a four-year degree has really become a six-year degree for many, and for a number of reasons. They make up remedial courses that you talk about or have mentioned, and that's partly true. But, it's very difficult to tease out the exact issues, and as money gets tighter, and I'm not saying this is a reason, but as money gets tighter, lots of revenue streams is very hard to take also. I know from my experience being a superintendent in that area for a number of years, our kids at our regional high school were accepted in honors programs, we had an arrangement with them as long as they completed a certain number of courses at the high school. We could never tease out the exact reasons why some students were requiring remedial courses when their SAT scores were so high, et cetera. But, it is concerning, and especially with increased pressure, you know, not only from our new governor, but throughout our nation, to fast-track degrees. Four years is perhaps too long, let's try to see if we can have students finish in three, when the reality is, I believe it's a little over 50%, 54% of our students nationwide are taking six years to complete their degree. So, you know, it's interesting, and a lot of research coming out on students just graduating out of high school, there's more and more support for gap years, where students intern or try to figure out what they want to do before starting to borrow or invest, you know, if it's a private college or university, you're looking at $50,000, $54,000 for tuition, plus the room and board, so, it's a big investment to make. And perhaps it's not a bad idea if students really don't know what they want to do to perhaps take a gap year and experience different things. Interesting.
I wanted to answer your question about degree attainment and the variables that are included in this year's report versus two reports last year, and explain that context to you and the rest of the school committee. This was a deliberate decision on the part of Dr. Harrington, the superintendent, and myself, because when we're taking a look at post-secondary enrollment, the thrust of this year's presentation was to provide a seven-year perspective on one variable, that 16-month post-secondary enrollment, and what those figures were and what the clear patterns were. And throughout the time that we present data to you or even YRBS, it's to make that, those numbers and that data meaningful and actionable. And as the superintendent indicated, the variables that come into play when students are two, four, and six years removed from Littleton High School are not necessarily factors that we can create action plans for here. However, that 16-month post-enrollment, that seems to be the magic indicator. It's not immediately, it's 16 months after, and you can see the trends and make meaningful conjecture, meaningful observations about the context of differences from year to year, as you heard the principal talk about how one class differs from the other. But, when you're removed four to six years out, and you're spread over colleges and universities throughout the United States, it's, it's very difficult to draw conclusions that, you know, are meaningful and actionable. And that was, so, it was a deliberate decision this year to focus on this variable.
Thank you for saying that.
Says it all.
Really.
But, if, as a school committee, you would like us to bring that data forward, we can. That's your decision, we don't mind.
Did you notice a big change year to year, last year, this year, in that data and the remedial courses and the four-to-five-year...
I did not, we pulled those reports. I did not.
Okay. Then if it sounds like it's similar to what we...
I think really, I think if we, if you guys can just keep an eye on it, and then you'll let us know if you think it's meaningful negatively or positively, I think that's reasonable. As long as we know we're not ignoring it...
No, and that's, and that actually is something that the three of us discussed, who looks at those, when we look at them, who they're discussed with, what are the possible implications, if any, there weren't any differences. For different classes, it's different, it's hard to see those four-year projections, because it's degree attainment. So, you're talking four years out, you know, we're only going to get 208, and the only difference from last year is 209. So, I mean, they are looked at, but it's a four-year gap.
Okay. That helps.
If you could tell that to me, if we don't need to, it sounds like we don't need to have a meeting about it, I could assume that's what we have asked you, but I'd be very interested in seeing that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. This is, the Edwin data is very useful.
We can send, one of us can send you the PDF of the report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list of items for this evening, it's our fourth year of putting together a district slideshow. And one thing that we all enjoy about the slideshow is pictures tell a thousand words. And in a matter of three, four, or five minutes, you can get a very good idea of all the good things that are happening within our schools, within our district. It also helps bring classrooms closer to us at the table and to the community. As I've said many times, the increase in using Twitter accounts and blogs give our parents an opportunity to see visually firsthand what's happening in our school, and it certainly has made a difference in terms of communication. And our new webpage emerges in the fall, Twitter accounts and blogs will be front and center, so it'll be a lot easier for people to follow. I know as a superintendent, I'll appreciate that, because it takes a lot of time trying to figure out where all these blogs are hidden, they're not hidden, but they're indexed in a very different spot in our website. So, having said that, it's kind of getting late, so we should proceed with the presentation. Music is good. Music is good. Let's do this again. Blind pictures don't tell a thousand words.
Come on. I don't know what happened.
Give it ten. After ten, I guess I'm throwing stuff. You know, while we're waiting for that, I'm going to make one announcement. Bus registration opens Monday, May 11th. Parents who need to register their kids for bus and pay the fees can do so online or at the central office. There'll be information going out from the schools electronically, and we'll have more to talk, say about that in our meetings for the rest of the summer. But, just to give people a heads up, as they start planning for next year, believe it or not, it is time to at least start thinking about it a little bit. But, again, bus registration will open Monday, May 11th, both online and at the central office.
Do you want to just do the school choice discussion while you...
Yeah, I think that might be a good thing to do.
That's good to add. All right, so, we're going to the superintendent's report.
In my mic.
Go ahead, Kelly, recommended school choice last year.
Yes, every year, we sit down as a leadership team and take a look at opportunities to offer school choice seats to students. The opportunities to open up seats have diminished throughout times, our class sizes fill up, but that's a good thing, because we had class sizes when I first came here that, or grade sizes more correctly, that were all over the board, which made it very difficult. We were moving staff around with higher numbers of students in grades, and we stabilized that. But, we're now at a point where our PTRs are, they're not maxed out, but we don't want to go any higher. So, having said that, accompanied by the fact this year to make our budget work, which I think the public, we can't say this enough, we had to inject far more revolving funds than we wanted to for the upcoming year, and part of our revolving fund balance is a result of the school choice students that we take into our district, to the tune of over $400,000. So, there's increased pressure on us, because we don't have the same kind of money that we've had before. If there are opportunities to take more students in, it would certainly be advantageous. There are also other variables we have to consider, and that's the new construction in town. And so, we've taken that into account, and we feel comfortable of offering 14 new seats. First page that you have shows that we were recommending five seats in kindergarten, which is pretty consistent over the years, between five and seven. Grade six, we have a smaller class moving in, so we can offer five seats. And grade nine, two seats, grade 11, one seat, and grade 12, one seat. Also, a reminder, or not a reminder, just an awareness, we have waiting lists to get into all of our schools from people in other communities, and we can't meet their needs, but it's nice to know that we have people that are willing to go on a waiting list to try to get their children in our school district. I think that's a good indicator as well, in terms of the direction that we've gone in a number of years, in terms of attracting people from other communities. So, if you look at the, some of the numbers here, last year, we had 11 new school choice students into our district, and proposing three more at 14. And in 1415, none of our school choice systems moved, our choice, our school choice students moved, correct? And we have five students who were school choice that will be graduating at the end of this year, so pretty balanced. If you go to the next page, we created a chart here, and it just shows you the grand totals. The very bottom of the page on the table, our projected enrollment for next year is 1,614 students. That also included an April 1st enrollment, which has us at 1,597 students. So, our system is staffed for that, but as I said, in some of our grades, we cannot handle any more students, and obviously, we haven't opened up seats for those students. But, a caution I have for the committee and the public is, as more families start moving into Littleton because of available housing, we may be faced with increased costs as a result of adding staff. Also need to know that it's much easier to take care of increased enrollment in K through five, as it is at middle school and high school. You can't, in middle school, for example, if we have 20 students move in in one grade and we need to add another class, we can't just add a teacher, because teachers need to have specialty areas, and they can't just teach and be a generalist at those grade levels. So, it's not as simple as adding one staff member, and it's not practical or efficient or valuable to a district to start trying to hire a point two... or valuable to a district to start trying to hire .2 teachers. You're not going to build capacity when you do that. Just some areas or some things that we need to, to think about as we move forward. Put on a positive note, and this is all positive, certainly not to be taken negative in any way, I'd much rather deal with those issues than deal with downsizing, in terms of losing students out of our district. And if you look at our profile in the last 20 years, our, our deviation from year to year is plus or minus 20. And we've been very, very stable for a good number of years in this district. And part of it is school choice has helped, but it's nice to know over that, that kind of span that we've been that consistent. Not a lot of communities can say that. Any questions about school choice?
I just had, I guess it's actually not about school choice, and maybe we can schedule it for a later discussion in another meeting. They have the bubble that's moving through currently, it's in seventh grade, the 132 number. They'll hit eighth grade next year, which that will, I assume, will just be handling with staff adjustments within school there, but when they hit the high school, are we anticipating what that might do to the distribution of teaching needs at the high school? Because the rebalancing of those is going to be significantly different.
We had a meeting today about that.
So maybe in a future meeting, we can just...
Yeah. It's a little too, it's a little too premature to, to come up with accurate numbers right now, because we're still dealing with the alternative credit scenario, and on and on and on. But once we have that settled, you know, we'll be able to sit down and be able to deal with this with, with more accuracy. If you're asking us whether we're going to need some more staff, yes. We're just not sure.
My feeling is, that's why I just, you know, it's not next year or the year after that, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at this.
One of the things we talked about is to try to, it, it might be difficult to do, but to do whatever we can to gather the data a little earlier and more factually about who might be committing to either the tackler private schools. I mean, it tends to be a natural flow, and it's a little fluid sometimes, but if we can explain, you know, why it's important, you know, it might be possible if people disclose or commit a little earlier, and that would be helpful to high school prior to the budget process, too.
Right.
I have a comment, not a question. And it's, we're just kind of singing our praises a little bit. I've had some folks from Westford and from Groton who have reached out to, before we had the data, to ask the superintendent if there were openings in certain grades. So, you know, people always talk about, well, Groton does this, or Westford does that, and their neck box, what is this? So I've had some people that reached out from those communities to send their children to Littleton. So I think that's a, it's a good testimonial to the product that we're producing.
Thank you for saying that.
Hats off to the staff, to the administration, to the town as well.
We also had a small delegation from Groton come in to see us in the summertime, wanting to take a look at what we were doing, because they were so impressed, so.
Actually, hold on a second. So you guys are all set with...
Yep. I'm, I'm good with the recommendations.
That's such a change.
What Chuck was saying, I'd be very interested to see where students are coming from versus where they're going, and that's very interesting data. I think, I think last year you sent that along, or at some point this year you sent that along. And we won't know now, because we're just creating the seeds, but when, maybe when we get our October 1 numbers.
Yeah, we usually do it in the fall.
That's right. That's right. That's very, I always found that very helpful. And I just want to say that I know this is a very difficult task to sort of see where exactly can we fit students where it's a net gain for the district, not just in terms of additional money we'll receive for this school choice, but also if you can fill out a class sometimes, it, it helps out, because if we have, if you're just three or four students short of, of a good number of students, that's, given your teaching staff, they know it's very, it's very important. So some, some people are critical of school choice as a general program, because they're concerned that, oh, shouldn't be seats, I'll just maximize the class size. And I think in a lot of areas that, that's the case, but it's not always the case. And so I know that the administrators are being very deliberate in these recommendations, because we all have concerns about class sizes and maintaining small class sizes. So when we create these new seats here, it's not because there's a class size issue in that one case, it's because there's an opportunity there to fill, to fill out that class size. So I think it's very important, and some tough work, and I don't envy you in that, but I'm glad that, glad that you're doing it. So thank you. And I think these recommendations, I trust the administration, I think.
Excellent. Thank you. As per statute, we would need a motion then, supporting the superintendent's proposal as presented.
I make motion that we support the superintendent's proposal as presented to us this evening. Second?
Motion made. Seconded, is there any further discussion?
Hearing none. Move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none? All right, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that the administration did. I think that we, what we have to recognize is, is that we have to achieve a balance between what we would like to do and what we feel we need to do, and given the circumstances in terms of the budget, and, you know, flat local aid, we just don't have the luxury of saying that, you know, if we had a pocket where there was only, you know, 16, 17 kids in a grade, unfortunately, we just don't have the luxury now to say, let's just leave it like that, isn't that wonderful for that particular class, as, as much as it would be. And there's no question, I think we all agree that, that, you know, it would be better. But I think we've proven, as some of the comments that we've heard tonight, that we can do this and still, you know, maintain the level of education, the level of achievement, and that's a reflection on our staff. So it, you know, it, it's the right thing to do is to take advantage of it in a measured, balanced way, which I think Alex, you know, hit the nail on the head there, is that obviously the, the administration has paid attention to that balance. And, yeah, I think we're all comfortable that we can make this work, so.
Great.
Appreciate the effort on that.
Thank you.
All right. And we got the slideshow cut out.
You ready? Thank you.
So there you have it, 2014-15. Year's almost over.
We're actually, we found a new program that we're, we're playing with. Our video equipment, TVs in our, our foyers in our schools, the software isn't that friendly. As a result, it's very hard to do a lot with it, but we found a new program that hopefully is going to allow us to enter, enter the data differently, and the pictures differently, so that we can have a direct link to LCTV, which would be really cool. So each school could, could upload various events, and it would go directly to LCTV and be formatted, so. Kind of excited about that, we just have to figure out how it works. Kudos to our tech department, our principals, teachers. It's not easy to, to come up with pictures like that, and, and we have thousands of pictures. Some of our schools are actually spooling some of their own pictures in their foyers. So when you're in our schools, make sure you, you stop for a few minutes and take a look at some of those pictures as well.
No, thank you. We talk about, you know, communicating with the public, and, you know, that, that's a little softer than some of the other stuff we do, but I think it's meaningful. You can see, you know, the affection for the kids half for each other, and the excitement that they have for being Littleton students, and it's just evident. So, and the music helps. Mark, is that you again, with the music?
No, no, no.
Oh, really?
No, me, he's the rocker roller.
Excellent. He's a rocker, very good.
All right. Let me just make a quick comment on the music. It's good music, upbeat, loved it, but if we could introduce Hillary and Steve to get involved with this, and we have some students doing some student music, and, you know, whether they're singing, or maybe some clips from some of the musicals, or, I don't know, just something that... I had written it down, and then Darryl leaned in and said, wouldn't it be cool if we could have the kids...
Yeah, we're starting to try, we're experimenting with video, and trying to see if we can inject some video into this slide presentation as well, so, yeah, it's a great idea.
The only other thing I want to do, sorry.
Yeah.
You mentioned there's so many pictures, and, you know, I know the staff, and there's so many people that volunteer to do that, but having a senior this year, Jen Feuto, who is, works tirelessly on the yearbook, is present at so many events, and is, is just an asset to us. I just want to just kind of give a little recognition and a shout out to her, and say thank you for all the photos that she's taken.
Excellent.
Those were hers?
Excellent. Great.
Jumping back into the superintendent's report, did we, did we get through the projected enrollments that was on?
We did.
All right, so we're good.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. So moving on, interested citizens. Anybody who would like to get up and speak at the podium? All right, hearing none. Subcommittee reports, PMBC. Oh, Mike's not here. Sorry.
He texted me, nothing to report. He's actually tied up in Worcester with Mark. He texted me, there was nothing to report.
Budget Subcommittee, I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind people that town meeting is Monday, this coming Monday, May 4th, 2015, 6:30 PM, at the middle school, Charles Forbes K Gymnasium, and also posted for Tuesday, May 5th, if necessary. So we will be voting the overall budget for the town, including the school department's budget, at that meeting. So interested citizens should definitely show up to support that effort. And segueing into that, and while we get this out of the way, is next Saturday, May 9th, town elections, also at the middle school, Charles Forbes K Gymnasium. So it's a busy time of year, town meeting followed by the elections, so people should be aware of that, and schedule their running around town accordingly.
Dump run.
Exactly. Dump run, coming off the soccer fields, heading towards the baseball fields, pull in the parking lot, walk across, go and vote.
It's candidate for baseball and softball, so bring some change with you when you go to vote, or to the dump.
Poll tax?
Poll tax, exactly.
All right, Policy Subcommittee.
Let's see. Kelly and I had a policy meeting the other day. We're going to be bringing forward at the next meeting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, updated policies. That will close out the 99%, I think, of the policies that will make it through the entire package.
Wait, wait, 99% you think? I'm used, used to, you, Darryl, I like exact...
I know, I'm usually to two decimal points, but, you know, anyway, so we'll, we'll be finishing up the Es there, and I think the most significant one that we're bringing forward is, is we've consolidated the busing from the, I think it's three, spread across three policies, we're going to just put it into one policy there, inconsistent with what we've been doing. We're not going to micromanage the bus routes from policy, those are the responsibility of the superintendent, so we'll be cleaning that language up a little bit there.
Take a look at that.
On it.